Welcome, everyone. I will call the Dublin City Council meeting on Monday, October 22nd, back to order. And Chris, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, well, we have a couple of special recognition presentations this evening. And if I could please ask, Anisha Boone, well, there she is. I can tell you are because you're wearing the sash across you that says that you're Miss T. Could you come up to the podium real quick for us? So, Anisha was recently, tell us the award that you recently have. Tell us about you, and then I'll read this.
Well, I recently, in June, won the title of Miss Ohio Junior Teen for the NAMM organization. And that's a pageant system, and it's a natural pageant system, so it focuses on confidence and speaking skills. So, yeah.
Well, that's fantastic. We have a proclamation for you. No, don't. No, 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 don't go anywhere. You don't get away that easy. Come on now. Actually, I'm going to drag your little sister into this, because it's my understanding that your younger sister, Janay?
Yeah.
She is, was she also, is she here? There you are. Come on up. Come on up. You know what? Why don't you come around and stand in front of the podium, so we can actually see you? There you are. There she is. It's my understanding that you will be competing in the national competition. Janay is eight years old and attends Eli Penny Elementary School. Janay placed sixth out of 110 girls and will be wearing the Dublin City Queen Title at the competition. So, congratulations to you, too, young lady. And I do have a proclamation. Your parents must be busting with pride.
Busting with pride.
There they are. Whereas Dublin Jerome High School student Anisha Boone was crowned 2018 Miss Ohio Junior Teen in the National American Miss Competition. And whereas she will compete against the other state queens at a competition in November in Anaheim, California. And whereas Anisha was also named the 2017 and 2018 Volunteer Service Award winner in the pageant competition, is a 2017 Dublin Community Champion Honoree and has served as a lead camp volunteer. And whereas she is a spokesmodel for Pops Printed Apparel and a model for the Seigol, is that how you say it? Seigol Models?
Seagull Models.
Seagull Models and Talent and Gehanna. And whereas at Dublin Jerome, Anisha is on the junior varsity basketball team, where she is a starting forward and post player, in addition to working as a tutor at the matnasium of Dublin. And whereas she is president of the Act Against Bullies and strives to help make a difference in the lives of other girls by helping to stop bullying by visiting 10 to 15 schools each year and sharing her personal story. And whereas her goal in life is to attend Stanford University or Arizona State to study medicine. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council and a grateful community, hereby congratulate Anisha Boone on her outstanding achievements and wish her all the best as she represents Ohio in the National American Miss Competition, signed this 22nd day of October, 2018. [applause] You've got to show them your crown. What's, what are crowners? Hold it up, so everybody can see it. Yep. It isn't often you get to wear an actual crown, so you better, you better take advantage of every opportunity you get. There she goes. Yeah, put it on. There's a complete picture. Now. Okay. Julie, come on up. Everybody knows Julie Rinaldi. As we move on to, if you can believe it, Centero is celebrating its 40th anniver, oh, you have a whole team. Bring everybody.
I wanted to introduce you to a couple.
Please, absolutely. So, tell us about what you do, Julie. Everybody may not know who you are and who you brought with you.
We have been in this community for 40 years, and we provide mental health and substance abuse treatment and prevention and anti-bullying. And congratulations, ladies. The world needs more and more people who stand up to bullies and do the right thing. So, I would like to introduce you to some of the folks who actually do the real work. So, this is Sarah Barr over here on the end. Sarah is our Development Director, and she's fairly new to us, but she comes to us with lots of passion and experience, and so we're excited to have her on our team. And then this is Stephanie Jurzak, and Stephanie does all of the older adult outreach and programming for, in the Dublin community. So, she's working with a lot of, directly with a lot of older aging and older adult residents in Dublin. And then this is Lucy Smith, who many of you know. Lucy tried to retire.
I thought you retired, Lucy.
Yeah, she tried.
You're like George Costanza. You just keep coming back.
She's back. It's the Hotel California, Centero Hotel California. Anyway, Lucy's back doing some special projects, and one of the reasons I asked her to be here, other than that she's wonderful, is that she's taken the lead, I'm working with Stephanie, and also the city, with Christine and others, on the Alexa Project with some older adults in the community. So, Lucy's been kind of heading that up. And then this is Soli Hernandez, who is our Chief Operating Officer. She's a Dublin resident and actually on the Dublin Food Pantry Board, and we're trying to get her more involved in the community. But she's been with us for how long? 11 years. And then this is Melissa, and Melissa does, is in charge of all of our school-based programming in the Dublin City Schools. So, I just wanted to have you, just meet some of the folks who are out there doing good work in the community.
Thank you, Julie. And you are a pillar of this community as well, and you have been around for a fair number of years supporting our community in a number of ways that a lot of people don't realize that support is even there until they need it. And the resources that you provide through Centero are just fantastic. And if I could take a minute and read this?
Sure. We also have, can I?
Sure, you can.
Can we show a video that you also recorded?
Of course, absolutely.
And who's going to do it? Nick?
Thanks, Nick.
Don't worry, we're not going to take over the whole meeting.
That's okay.
Centero, formerly Dublin Counseling Center, is celebrating our 40th anniversary this year. Centero is a nonprofit organization that provides a wide range of behavioral healthcare services, including mental health and substance abuse treatment, crisis and prevention services, and grief and loss support services throughout central Ohio on behalf of children, adolescents, adults, older adults, and families. In our 40-year existence, some things have changed, and some things remain the same. Our focus on client-centered care has not changed. Our commitment to the highest quality of professional care has not changed. Our belief in the individual's ability to personally succeed with the proper support has not changed. Our belief that every individual, no matter what the issues, deserves access to our care has not changed. We continue to grow and develop programs and services to meet the unique and changing needs of the communities we serve. We have made great strides in the areas of mental health and addiction treatment and prevention in 40 years, but we are still fighting stigma and the misperception that asking for help is a sign of weakness. Asking for help is a sign of strength. We exist to serve members of the community who can benefit from our professional compassionate care and support. We are a vital community partner and work closely with many community groups to support residents in need of all ages and multiple settings. We rise by lifting others. I am Julie Erwin Rinaldi, and I am the CEO of Centero. And I am here to tell you, it is okay to ask for help. Help is available, and you do not have to endure difficulty alone. Just ask, just call, and just trust.
Absolutely. It's well worth it.
And we wouldn't be here without your support.
Well, and if someone needs your help, they can just get on the website, and they can get their way to you, and you'll help direct them to where they need to be. Whereas Centero first opened its doors in Dublin, as Dublin Counseling Center in 1978, and has been providing compassionate, expert counseling, and community-based services in central Ohio for more than 40 years. And whereas offering a comprehensive range of behavioral healthcare services, Centero's number-one goal is to create a welcoming, comfortable, and safe environment where individuals and families can receive treatment, prevention, and/or supportive services that result in positive, life-changing outcomes. And whereas Centero has been a long and valued partner with the City of Dublin in hosting community conversations around the important social issues such as aging in place and working with the City in the Dublin Act on Substance Abuse Prevention and Education. And whereas, in honor of this 40th anniversary, Centero has embarked in a 40-for-40 fundraiser, believing that together we can continue to empower people to live healthier, happier lives. And whereas, in addition to the invaluable services Centero provides at its offices in Dublin, Hilliard, Lewis Center, and Columbus, it was also named one of the top workplaces for 2018 by Columbus CEO Magazine. And whereas Centero lives by the motto, "Every day, we rise by lifting others." Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate CEO Julie Erwin Rinaldi and the staff and board members of Centero for 40 years of providing hope and healing to our community, signed this 22nd day of October, 2018.
Thank you, dear. Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys. We'll get out of your way.
Okay. Chief, I'm going to let you, where are you hiding behind Donna there? Kick this next really fantastic recognition off. This is quite an amazing story, Chief, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dolmetsch and Mr. Cox, if you could come up? I haven't met them yet, so I was kind of trying to figure out who they were.
Didn't know what to stand up.
So, it's a rare occasion that we, as a police department in the city, get to recognize members of our community for stepping up and taking some actions that really avert a potential tragedy. And that's what occurred with Mr. Dolmetsch and Mr. Cox. This was back on August 8th, and on that day, a young lady had actually climbed the fence, the protective fence, at the Avery Overpass to 33, and was on the other side of the fence, appeared to be prepared to jump into traffic. And that's when Mr. Dolmetsch and Mr. Cox decided to take some action and were able to talk her back over the fence. They were able to divert traffic, or at least get it stopped to the point where it reduced some of the risk that if she had fallen or jumped. And because of their actions, the young lady was safe. We were able to get her to the firefighters, get her to some treatment and to some help, and, as I said, averted a potential tragedy. So, the police department, we have an award of, an award of achievement that we award to members of the community for actions like this, and I think that these two gentlemen are more than worthy of receiving this award. So, thank you for both of you.
Thank you. [applause] You know, when you, when you intervene, sometimes you can change people's lives. So, that's certainly what happened there. So, they're well-deserving. Thank you very much for that. Chief, citizen comments. No one signed in, however, this is the portion of the agenda where anybody can get up and talk for five minutes about whatever they want. Is there anybody that has anything that they want to say, even though they maybe didn't sign in? Okay, we will continue to move on. The consent agenda, does any council, there's only two items, minutes from October 8th, and a liquor notice. Does any council member wish to remove either of those two items from the consent agenda? Then I will make a motion that we approve those two items. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Keenan? Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Postponed items, ordinance 47-18.
Adopting the 2019 to 23 five-year capital improvement program.
Dana?
Good evening, good evening, members of council. In response to the last Finance Committee, the whole meeting that you held at your last meeting and the last council meeting, staff presented back to you sort of consolidated memo that I think highlighted the, the changes or proposed changes to the capital improvement program. This memo reflects those changes. It outlines the key components of what would be the capital improvement program changes. All other items as presented to you originally on October 8th would still remain. This just captures those changes. So, staff recommends that, that you would adopt essentially the ordinance, but those changes would be reflected, as I said, in the memo. Angel and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council. Kathy?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I had a question about the change in the park number from our discussion on October 8th. We had 10.6 million in there, and the proposal in that memo was 10.9 million. The $300,000, Angel sent me a note earlier today with some, some comments against that. What were the timing of those? And maybe you could share with council what those, what make up that 300. My question was more about the timing of those, because I wasn't sure that those were fitting in the fiscal 19 timeframe, as I understood it, ma'am.
Those would be associated with the lower Plaza construction process. So, both of those projects being combined, it would be the latter stages of the construction process itself towards the completion of the entire project.
So, we're probably going to see those in 2020?
2022.
2022?
The end of 2022.
But they were in the 19, they were in?
Right, because the, the planning and construction and bidding process, and then the construction process itself has got to start in 2019 in order for us to meet that deadline.
So, that whole amount is there, but the actual funding of that, and part of my question goes to, there was some discussion about fire pits and a few other things that we didn't have a lot of time to discuss as a council on those. So, this, this covers that, but the timing of that, it'll come back to council again? I guess that's my question.
Right. The thing that I would add, I think we're headed with that, is the remaining approval process. So, you're putting the funding in place, as we talked about the Finance Committee, about the joint bid of those Upper Plaza, Lower Plaza projects, and then followed on with the Area 3 or the balance of the park. We still need to come back to the final development plan for the park. We still owe you that, and we, we would still have time to check in with you on those other amenities as we progress the design. However, it is important that, as you adopt this budget, you know, we will start moving forward with design regarding all those aspects of the park, but we, we still do have a couple check-ins with you along the way, if that helps with the timing.
And one of the other changes was in the earlier proposal, the, the entire 17 million, if I have that number correct, was to be debt-financed, and in this particular change, 2.8 million of that is not the case. Is that correct? That is correct. Great. And then my only other question was, there was a timing change back on the council chambers that was originally in 2020. I see that has moved up to 2019, and, and the timing of the sale, I mean, that's just a lot that would have to have happened here. I'm, I'm curious why that changed.
It was essentially just a swap between the movement of the City Hall functions to the new property at 5555 Perimeter Road. The plan is to construct council, council chambers first, and then finish up with the movement of everybody else to the new City Hall. So, in the original proposal, the movement was there first, and then the City Hall council chambers, but we wanted to reverse those, just so that everything kind of got completed at the same time, and we weren't moving ahead of when council chambers was completed.
Yeah, I would add, essentially, we got our construction sequencing turned around from the original proposal, in the original proposal. We have a lease in that building through the end of 19. This enables us to lean forward and do the work that's outside that building, which was our intent, but we didn't reflect it that way to budgets. We just needed to flip that around.
The starting of that, though, is that predicated on the sale of the other building?
It is, and the timing of that sale will have to be, you know, coordinated with, well, the approval of this budget, the approval of the moving forward. In fact, we've got a meeting this week with, on that very topic, but the intent would be to, to sell that building. And as, I think as you may recall, we talked about moving the Development Department here ultimately into this building, and the operations here going to the new building.
Yeah, and then the reason I'm asking that is the funding of that would be from that building, as I see it aligned in that budget, right? So, one is predicated on the?
Yeah, it's not covering the whole thing, but it's a significant contribution to that.
And then my final comment, I guess, just to verify that from a debt issuance perspective, and the discussion that we had at the last meeting, was that it was not anticipated just because, frankly, because of the timing of the park, that, that there would be a debt issuance in 2019.
That is what we're currently expecting. Certainly, as was stated previously, when we execute a contract, I have to certify that the funds are encumbered for that project. So, if we aren't in a position to issue the debt at that point in time, we will do an advance from the general fund, which is what we've done with many projects, and then, you know, once we do issue the bonds, then repay ourselves from the general fund.
But just for point of clarity, there, there isn't a plan at this point to do a 2019 debt issue. We're going to do an 18 tonight.
We're going to do an 18 tonight. And then certainly, you know, I think the plan is to just keep track of what's going on in the market. If there is a reason why we should bring this forward in 19, and depending on the contract, at, at the end of the day, our general fund has capacity to float this money for a year, six months, however long is necessary. So, I understand from your perspective that you do not want to issue debt in 2019. If there were to be market conditions that we thought it would be more advantageous to offer that option to council, we would do so, but at this point in time, that is not our intent.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kathy? Chain? John?
No, I'd just add that trying to put X amount of dollars in a bucket each and every year that are equal is very difficult, and that you need to have the flexibility for what is going on in the market. We don't want to get down the road and have a problem with the interest rates being popped three or four times in 19 or 20. So, it's, as long as the capacity's there and we have the ability to pay, you know, we need the councils, the future councils are going to need the flexibility and not just be so rigid and say it has to be 6 million or 7 million in each year going forward.
And you know, Mike, the, the point of this, to me, was the flexibility. That was the point of creating capacity in outer years, so that we, in fact, do have the, the capacity. And, and I think by some of the discussions we're having, I think we've done that. And that was, to me, an important thing because of the dynamic situation that we're in, is that we will have capacity to do things.
All right, fair enough.
Thank you.
Christina, anything? Chris?
I just wanted to verify, we'd had some discussion about the Park Land Acquisition Fund, and through the CIP, these changes, we're not changing our Park Land Acquisition Fund designations.
That is correct. It's how it's, it has been.
All right, thank you.
Is that it? Other ones? Anne?
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 6618, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds, the maximum aggregate principal amount of $19,600,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of constructing a parking structure within historic Dublin and the Bridge Street District, along with a series of related and abutting roadway improvements, all of which relate to the construction of the Dublin branch of the Columbus Metropolitan Library and otherwise improving the site together with all incidental work and related pertinences thereto. 6718, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of 1.35 million, for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal sanitary sewer system by lining existing sewer lines, installing new sewer lines, and rehabilitating manholes, together with all incidental work related to pertinences thereto. And 6818, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds, the maximum principal amount of 1.75, 1.750,000 dollars, for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing Riverside Crossing Park, including pedestrian plazas on both the east and west sides of the park, together with all incidental work and related pertinences thereto.
Thank you, Anne. Angel?
Thank you, members of council. There are no changes from the first reading, but as a point of clarification, I just wanted to notate that the ordinance on the sewer improvements was correct in the first reading at $1,350,000, which is what was listed in the ordinance. It was not listed in the original memo, so I wanted to clarify that for the record.
Any questions from council on any three of these ordinances?
You know, I just have a comment. Sitting here for 20 years and seeing us re-line our sewers constantly, and it's in the tune of millions of dollars. I just wondered if, and maybe this is a legal thing for Thaddeus, and maybe it's an engineering question, if we could write an ordinance that would allow citizens, when they're building houses, to have a cistern, these large plastic cisterns, which they're using all over, and then divert their downspouts into those, so we can get out of this, the, it'd basically be like a, a backflow preventer, where you do a water deduct on your taxes, because you're really not using the sewer system. And I just wonder, you know, why, with all the rain we have, and I actually live in a place where we actually only had electric wire going to the house for electricity, and all the rainwater was kept in cisterns, and that was your drinking water and all your water for showering, and with a solar hot water thing on the roof, and why we don't maybe break out of this, come up with an ordinance where we allow citizens to put these kind of plastic cisterns in the ground, they dig their houses, or put in their, build their houses, and then allow a deduct on their sewer tax for the water side of it. Same thing with an irrigation system. We have a deduct, because the water isn't going into the sewers, it's going in the surrounding ground. So, it'd be a real progressive thing for us to do, and we might be able to start a trend for the rest of Columbus, and we probably would have to work with Columbus, because they're tied to a lot of our, our water supply. But I just would think it's another, you know, when you, with all this precipitation that we get, it's, it's free water, and I think the country, water will soon be the new oil, they say. And it's time we maybe thought outside the box and figured out how to capture this, and had an ordinance that allow our citizens to have a, a tax break on doing something like this, to pay for this process. To just, just food for thought.
John, I'm not exactly sure I understand. You talked about a deduct, because you weren't using the sewer, so even if you captured the rainwater, your, your sewage usage would be greater than your water usage.
Yeah, we're talking about, you know, we're?
You're not talking about a cistern for sewage.
No, storm.
Storm.
Yeah. And then reuse that water.
Sure.
And it's just about maybe time the country in total started thinking about this, because most of the country gets plenty of rainwater.
Sure. When you, when you were speaking of sewer deduction, because I don't think we pay on our water bill a storm sewer, but, but a sanitary sewer, so.
Right. That's just something to start thinking about. Maybe we could lead out in this kind of thought.
I think it's a great topic that we could take up, you know, in consideration, along with our sustainability framework.
Sustainability.
And maybe, over time, take a look at that. So, I know there's been, you know, we've had more talk, and there's that, that framework talks about the application of solar, and, and we do a lot with rain barrels already and things like that. So, certainly, I think that's something that we can, you know, as we have those dialogues relative to our sustainability efforts, we ought to, that's, that's probably the best place to raise that, is my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comment from council on all three of these ordinances? Hearing none, we're going to vote on them at one time. Anne?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 69-18, Anne?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentive to Johnson Controls to induce a leased facility to retain and expand an office.
Nothing has changed since the introduction first reading, but as a quick recap, we are proposing a one-time retention incentive of $35,500 to Johnson Controls, and they plan to consolidate 140 existing employees in Dublin and bringing another 75 over to put them all under one roof. What's exciting about this project is this consolidation will make the company jump up in employment and break into our top 30 largest employers in the city. And this evening, I have Jamie Marksberry, who is the Operations Manager with Johnson Controls. I invite him to come to the podium and either of us can answer your questions.
Jamie, welcome. Thanks for sticking around Dublin.
I want to stay here all the time.
Good, I like that.
So, really what I kind of wanted to do is give you a little bit of background on Johnson Controls. Currently, our corporate office is in Cork, Ireland, which makes it good that we're staying in Dublin.
Okay.
You know, we serve 150 countries. We serve industrial, we also serve technology, okay? Our Building and Technology Group, we cover everything from HVAC systems to HVAC controls, to building controls, to fire alarm, to security, pretty much anything fire protection-wise. Previously, we were just Simplex Grinnell prior to the Tyco and Johnson Controls merger. Since then, we've became complete. Prior to this, we did not have anything to do with HVAC under Simplex Grinnell and Tyco. What it did do is that merger caused us to have two branches in Columbus. We have, as she was saying, as Colleen was saying, we have about 215 employees total now, about 140 that are already here in Dublin, another 75 that we're bringing over from Westerville. We are in the final stages of negotiations for the Stanley Steamer Building. Funny, everybody says Stanley Steamer, everybody knows where it's at. Every time I give directions to the office, I say the Stanley Steamer Building, and everybody, oh, okay, I know where we're at. We're in the final negotiations with that, so we're pretty sure that's where we're going, but obviously, anything could happen along the way. You know, we're really excited about staying here. It's a great area. I'm personally excited because I live close to here, so makes it easy for me. But, you know, a lot of the reasons that we're asking for the incentive is we're looking at about $470,000 in capital expenditures. We're looking at roughly another $200,000 worth of expenses beyond that. So, obviously, we're doing, trying to do the best we can to offset those expenses, and, you know, every little bit helps along the way, so that's the reason that we're asking for this, you know? One of the major reasons we stayed in Dublin and in this area is, one, Simplex Grinnell, prior to being Simplex Grinnell, was Simplex, and we've been here 30 years, you know, in the exact same location. We literally moved across the parking lot when we became Simplex Grinnell in 2003. So, now that we've became Johnson Controls, obviously, the Simplex Grinnell and Tyco side was very eager just to stay right here, because this is where we're from, and we want to stay here, okay? The nice thing about our locations is we have access to roads from all directions. If one road's shut down, there's four other ways to get there, you know?
That's right.
We love it, you know, it's good for our people, it's good for, you know, our employees, it's good for our customers. Another thing is, you know, Dublin's a safe area, you know, and safety's very, very important to our company. And the safety of our employees, you know, I've been with the company going on 16 years, we've had one incident in 16 years, and I can tell you when the incident happened, they were there, quick, you know, because I was there, I had a computer stolen, you know, but, you know, it was very nice to see. So, it's a lot of the reasons why we want to stay here. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you or-
Fantastic, thank you. Any, council have any questions for Jamie? Or for Colleen, for that matter?
Yep.
Hearing none, let's move on. Anne?
Oh, me too. Yeah, they had talked about taking us to Westerville, and, yeah, we kind of knocked that down as quickly as we could. So, there's a few locations they looked at, but, you know, it just wasn't, we couldn't get enough footprint for what we needed, so.
That's great, thank you very much for coming in. Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie, appreciate you coming in. An ordinance 70-18?
Authorizing city manager to enter into amendment number one to the development agreement binding between the City of Dublin and Crawford-Hoyne Development Partners, LLC relating to the Bridge Park Development.
Dana?
I think Angel's gonna respond with some of the questions.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, council had first reading of this ordinance to amend the development agreement with Crawford-Hoyne for the Bridge Park Development. The modifications can be summarized as follows. First, to update the roadway network. Second, to increase the cap of debt that can be issued by the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority for the community facilities of Bridge Park within the new community authority and the roadways. Increasing the cost of issuance on public improvement debt. Allowing for the optional redemption of the bonds from 10 years to 15 years. Releasing the developer from a make-whole premium. Amending the bed tax provision. And finally, amending the waterfall for revenue related to Block D, which would provide funding for the public market, which has been discussed. Council posed a number of questions during the first reading, and there has been some follow-up emails, so staff has responded with both a memo that was in your packet for tonight, as well as a written email today to Councilmember DeRosa's questions. So, with that, the city team is here to answer any questions. I know the Crawford-Hoyne team is here to answer any questions that council may have.
Well, why don't we just stick with what's worked so far? Kathy?
Before I ask questions, Dana, I know in the memo, and we didn't necessarily have the details on this, that you said you have had some interactions with folks in the historic district, maybe if the timing's right, we could share that now, because there weren't necessarily details available in the memo at that time.
Sure, I'd be happy to verbalize that. So, as you know, there's about 20 food, beverage-type establishments in what you would consider historic Dublin on south of 161, north of 161 Bridge Street. I engaged personally, I just wanted to talk to them, kind of wearing my Development Director hat, and also just wanted to check in. So, of those, I spoke specifically to nine owners. I tried to go to the owner level, and every opportunity that I had, I spoke to four store managers. I did not reach out to the large chains like Starbucks, Domino's, and Donato's. I did not speak to Jenny's because Jenny's is already in the north market and actually got her start there, so I thought, I'll call her later, you know, I do have a connection there. I did learn a lot about ice cream, however. I talked to the owners of Johnson's Ice Cream and got the whole rundown on the ice cream market, learned more about that than I ever thought I would, but it was very fascinating. I was not able to get the Mezzo Mr. Souchere Vitality Smoothie and Juice, but I will get back to them eventually. I did speak to the owners of the proposed new bakery as well that's intended for South High Street. I did also speak to seven of the eight HDBA board members in addition to, it was in addition to the HDBA board meeting that was Thursday night, that Councilmember Saludo, myself, Donna Goss, and Kyle Kreidler attended and had a good conversation with them. So, my overall takeaways on this were frankly, something like this. I focused my line of questioning around, how's it going, just generally? Then, I just asked about, you know, any specific concerns they seemed to have, and then generally how they felt about the west side, east side situation, is how it's often been termed to me, and then more specifically, as the conversation went on about the proposed north market. Everyone, I will tell you this, this is kind of my rundown assessment for what it's worth, and you can talk to folks yourself, or you can hear things secondhand or whatever and have your own take on it, but this is Dana's take. Everyone's very proud of their brand, they are, they're proud of their offerings and their services, they feel they are competitive, they have a loyal and growing customer base, is what I was hearing consistently. Some have had to change, some have changed to the changing marketplace, so as you introduce more players, more people that are serving the community, there were certainly some changes made. Some of those are in hours of operation. In fact, one of the reasons I had a hard time connecting, one of the restaurants, I kept calling in the afternoon, I'm like, why am I not getting anybody? It's because they changed their hours to the evening, and I just wasn't aware of that, myself had not been to that particular one for a while. So, there are adjustments being made, offerings are being adjusted, and certainly, they all acknowledge what all is going on relative to what's happening in the environment. But overall, I would characterize their view as guarded optimism. I think that they generally feel that the excitement and the vitality of what's happening generally in the area between the west and the east side is, they are enthusiastic about that, they feel that it's bringing more people to the area, it's becoming more destination. They're a bit guarded, only in the sense that a couple, a couple of these, I'd say half of the nine owners I spoke to, or half of the, say, four or five of the 13 that I spoke to, said that they had, they were optimistic, but they were a little bit guarded only because they were concerned about saturation rate. And if you're running a bar, restaurant, coffee shop, you would have a concern about that. So, I asked them, so what's your answer to that? The answer was, they don't know. They don't know the market and where the market tips. I was actually, there was one, two people who, pretty experienced and long-term restaurant owners in the immediate area, who expressed it to me this way, and I thought it was pretty fascinating. They said, look, they're proud of their brand, proud of what they provide, as I mentioned earlier, and then they said, they felt that more restaurants to the area actually gave them more opportunity. They felt that they're, even though they have a loyal customer base, they're not gonna eat at their restaurant every night. Of course, I corrected them and said, well, you probably find me and my wife there most every night, but, you know, everyone will probably go somewhere else, you know, if you're eating out more than once a week or something like that. They looked at that as not as a customer loss, but an opportunity to get the same from another restaurant, where people are coming here and trying out other restaurants or not eating at the same restaurant every night. So, that was my take on that. When it came to the north market specifically, there was probably guarded optimism around the smaller ones than the larger establishments, but I was actually, for those on the south side, South High Street, because there's only a couple, if you think about it, there's not very many South High Street, and they were actually as enthusiastic as I thought they could ever be about the north market and about the future. One gentleman defined himself as being the cheers of the south side, and his neighborhood base is more Waterford Village and the immediate area, south of High Street, than it would be somewhere else. So, he's really not relying on people walking over to him. If you think about the coffee shops around there, think about Starbucks, but Starbucks is also in the Kroger Plaza right down the street, Starbucks is at the corner of Sawmill and generally, the corner of Sawmill and Bridge Street. They're also in the Kroger Plaza and Giant Eagle Plaza and on Perimeter Drive, out on Perimeter Drive, and they just got a new one, I didn't realize was there until this last weekend, I saw it, down on Tuttle Crossing. You have Bruegger's Bagels, you serve coffee. You have a new Tim Hortons right over at Sawmill and 161, and you have a Panera over there. So, there's been this ongoing coffee shop, bagel shop, bakeries coming to the immediate area, but no one has expressed concern about that either. As I had the staff look at the north market, you have 27, you have, within a two-block area, I asked them to look specifically at the two-block area, because I wanted to kind of draw a correlation to distance, and there were 27, I've got it right here, I don't know why I'm looking around, there were 27 food and beverage providers specifically within a two-block area of the existing north market. And there are coffee shops and bakeries and confectionaires and ice cream shops and bars and restaurants. Now, I know that's a little different because there's a lot bigger population down there, you've got a large convention center and so forth, so maybe that's supported, but that's only two blocks. Go three blocks, four blocks, go to the short north, there's a ton of stuff immediately around that. A few of the other things, and some of this bore out as well, when it came to talking to these folks, also at the HDBA meeting, I was actually surprised at how many of those folks were not involved in the HDBA. Very few. In fact, you only have one restaurant-type provider, the Cupcakeery Linda, who was here last meeting, is the only one on the HDBA. And the HDBA even recognizes, and the Strategic Alliance recognized, they don't have a lot of the restaurant folks participating in that. Now, I take a vow of, Shattelain's also on the HDBA, there's two. So, of that, there's not very many. I was kind of surprised these folks even said they weren't that actively involved. Now, I don't say that as a criticism, I encourage them to get involved and participate, and they all said, yeah, we recognize that they're there and we probably should be a little bit more involved. So, some of the same issues continue to come around, or come out, that have been around for a long time, and this is sort of a maintenance issue for us, as staff in the city. Several expressed concerns about the parking, we all know that's been an ongoing issue. Turnover on the south side of 161 and the town center, one and two lots, needs to be relooked. I know that there has been some habitual issues there where people get a little, employees get a little lax, and then they don't abide by the three-hour turnover timeframe, even though we've worked with them to have all-day parking over at the church. We just have to go back and enforce that a little bit and have a conversation with the employers, so we will do that. Another concern that was raised is that there's a lack of care of some of the buildings by the landlords. I think we've all seen that there's some deterioration of buildings and they're not particularly well-cared for. And I've got really mixed reviews on lease rates. I kept hearing, everyone's really concerned about lease rates, and actually had one small company tell me that they were shutting down another area of central Ohio because the lease rates were so high, but Dublin was so reasonable, that they're even looking at taking on the portion of a building next to them, and that's South High Street. So, I was a little bit surprised by that. No doubt, lease rates will go up over time, we've seen it ourselves. We just negotiated the lease with Dublin Village Tavern that you all just approved. We adjusted our lease rate with Dublin Village Tavern to adjust to the market, we've seen increases. I think that can be a good thing. I've had some owners, people who are owned and occupied, tell me that's a good thing, it's good for their investment to see values go up. So, you know, as certainly predicted, there's construction and renovation fatigue, and I want to call out Oscars and Brazen Head. And I want to sit here in public and say, I really feel sorry that they have had to put up with so much dust and everything of construction. And, you know, we've done some promotional stuff with videos and so forth with Oscars, we're gonna do the same with Brazen Head, trying to put directional signage to them from the parking area because they've been hit so hard with going back and tearing up sidewalks and working utility issues. So, nothing against the other restaurants, but don't forget about Brazen Head and Oscars, I'm just gonna say it because they've probably bore the brunt of it in that particular section, so appreciate, and I express the city's appreciation for their continued efforts there. So, everyone, appreciate the phone call and just the opportunity to talk. I love doing that stuff, you know, I would often do that. I want to recognize Donna Goss and Kyle Kreidler for their proactive communication and effort in historic Dublin. They have been engaging, engaging, engaging with the HDBA, they've, even when they, no one wants to meet, I require them to meet, but they, everyone does come to their meetings, they have good dialogue and discussion, I think, and Councilmember Saludo can add to this, we are not leaving the historic district behind, and I don't, I am not convinced from my conversation, for what it's worth, again, this is only Dana's opinion, that the, considering this as a community facility, is going to tip the scales on the west side of the river. I think all boats will rise, that's my assumption and the reason why staff is willing to recognize, or recommend, rather, the adoption of this ordinance, but I think my conversation with these folks validated their tenacity and their desire to be successful, the needed partnership with the city, and the ongoing effort that we need to give them. I got one more thing I want to say, and I appreciate you giving me all this time. There's a lot of conversation about retail, other than restaurants, coffee shops, bars, but like, you know, clothing stores and things like that. There has been a presence of retail in historic Dublin. As we've gone back, in fact, we had a meeting with Scott Dring, trying to reflect on, he's done his research on what were all the different retail shops down there besides restaurants and bars, we've been doing the same thing, it was an interesting comparison and analysis about them. Some of those have turned over, but some of those are becoming new stores, too. So, it's not that everyone's just disappeared. I mean, if you look at the Toy Emporium, went in there after the Flower Boutique left. If you, we had identified a list of these kind of companies that had taken over old spots. Now, it's not to say there's not a couple empty storefronts down there, there are, and we know that we've had a couple that have left lately. There's been a rumor of another one leaving, which I talked to the owner the other day, I'm sorry I'm not throwing names out there, but they told me they're not going anywhere. So, I just caution that we be careful about what we hear second and third-hand, because my validation- So I just caution that we be careful about what we hear second and third-hand, because my validation is, that's not always true. That's not in, you know, large numbers, but in the onesie and twosie. So I know that's a broad overview, but I just wanted to assure you that I've reached out and talked to folks, and at the end of the day, I feel pretty optimistic about the whole thing.
Well, this was my request, and, you know, I thank you for doing it. I think it's important to do, and to get that information firsthand from those folks, and to get that sort of feedback. You know, that's all we can do, is get the feedback that they're willing to give us, and meet with as many of the folks as possible. So, thank you for doing what I asked, and, you know, from there, we have to take it at face value.
I'd like to mention, too, you know, I live in the district, and so I do the same thing, walk and talk to everybody. I think what we have to recognize in many cases is that our neighborhoods are, each one is unique and individual, just like German villages adjacent to the city, the city center. I think as we bring energy and pay attention to the unique qualities of each neighborhood, and make sure that we support those neighborhoods to be the best neighborhoods that we can. Bridge Park is a fledgling new neighborhood, and we're giving it the support it needs, I believe, to become an authentic neighborhood, one that isn't, that is going to stay for a very long time as a successful neighborhood, with a variety of demographics, and a variety of services, and a variety of retail, everything that you would want in an authentic neighborhood. I think the Historic District is, too. It's going through, as all neighborhoods do, I think sometimes, sort of a cycle. You know, it was, you know, maybe not the best for a while, it started to get a little resurgence, as we saw the curve, and everybody wanted to be down there, they've had a lot of construction. I think they'll find their water level, too. We must continue to support them to be an authentic and strong neighborhood, as we would do any neighborhood in the city. And I lament any kind of competitiveness, because I think each of these neighborhoods are unique and different. And the Waterford Mid-Century, when we put in those shared-use bike paths, we opened the floodgates to a lot of walking and biking, and I can tell you, I can't pull out my driveway on Dublin Road without stopping to be sure I don't hit somebody, because we have so much traffic on the bike paths coming up from the south to come and visit the Historic District. And they'll walk across the bridge. And I do think that our, the service that we can give the Historic District in any neighborhood is to just make sure that we can identify what their needs are, give them the support they need to get better, or to be stronger, and move forward. I just think we have to just do that together, so I'm not really too concerned about.
Yeah, well, we sort of got off onto the discussion about Historic District and all that. I think, Kathy, your questions maybe go to more to the nuts and the bolts of the development agreement. So why don't we get through your questions, and then get back to a more philosophical-level discussion about the whole thing? If that seems appropriate.
Oh, goody, nuts and bolts. So my questions, and thank you very much, I know I asked more than my fair share of them on the financing. I will say, I think the North Market is a very good idea. My questions have been more around the comments about what are the implications economically to the taxpayers of making the change to the development agreement? Because we all know there was an enormous amount of work, and a lot of financial analysis in putting that original agreement. That said, times change, things happen, opportunities create, et cetera, so forth. So my questions have been around, help us understand the economics of it. So in the back-and-forth of raising the cap, changing the maturity timeframes, et cetera, so forth, I think I've had clarity on that. One of my questions, though, and I would like to talk about it a little bit more, if we could please, and that is the financial ramifications, if you will, positive and/or negative, of changing the city's position in the waterfall of the revenue streams. There's been some back-and-forth, trying to understand just what is the consequences. I understand, Angel, that in the original agreement, that the revenues that would potentially be derived for them were not part of the funding, if you will, of the infrastructure, they weren't incorporated in that, so it's not a risk. All that said, there's still a financial, either positive or negative, to the city of making this change. And I would like to understand that a little bit more, and understand a little bit more about the turbo bond that we're talking about here. The emails that came back and forth today basically said that the turbo bond was the option for financing, and that the city of Dublin would have to remove themselves from one of the intermediary steps in the waterfall to make that happen. So I don't know if it's the financial expert that we need, but could we explain a little bit more about why that is our single option, from a financing perspective here?
Yeah, I would ask Josiah Huber with DePernan to explain that.
Thank you very much.
So, it certainly wasn't the only option. I would classify it as the win-win solution, that we, when we really dug into the model, and we looked at meeting the city's new revenue and debt service coverage constraint of, we increased it from one hundred and fifteen percent to one hundred and twenty percent. And as we looked at, you know, being able to fund, you know, a garage that now needed to be bigger to support office space versus supporting residential, the old plan called for, you know, more multifamily. And the new plan called for more office, which by code and by, you know, just meeting lease-up demand, you have to have more spaces, so the garage grew. And the great concept of the North Market came forward for that space, so our overall costs increased, which, when we looked at, you know, the investment also increased, and the square footage increased overall, which drove value and TIF revenue to the project. We still were coming up a little bit short in getting to that one-twenty cover, especially in years sixteen through thirty, where we actually do have to make a payment to the city prior to debt service. So the solution that we proposed to the city, and its financial advisor and its team, was this idea of a turbo structure, where we could take the excess, if and when it becomes available, and apply it to principal directly, as if, you know, you're paying down your home mortgage quicker, which allowed us to reduce the overall financial cost by about eight to nine million on a projection basis. Get us above that one-twenty cover level, and also actually, and even on a net-present-value basis, drive up the projected return to the city at the bottom of the waterfall. We, you know, in exploring other options, we quickly realized, you know, all of our other options are going to force us to scale back this bond issue, and, you know, potentially not be able to fund the larger garage, or a portion of, you know, the entire amount necessary to fund the public market component.
So if the city said, I didn't want to take ourselves out of the waterfall, you're saying there's no way to structure a turbo bond to make that work in that scenario?
Yeah, the key thing with the turbo piece is if the city was ahead of that special redemption feature, then a bondholder is going to have to underwrite that city obligation, which is quite complicated, given that it's, you know, C block, B block, another bond issue that was previously issued for the roadways, and they'll heavily discount that feature, you know, and ultimately conclude that...
I'm not sure I followed you, can you tell us that again?
Meaning, the revenue that would flow to redeem the bonds quicker could get siphoned off for city obligations if C and B block were delinquent, or if, you know, there wasn't enough revenue from those blocks to cover the debt service on the original roadway issue. So that annual obligation is north of $2 million, and that amount alone, and just a credit analysis report that, you know, a bond purchaser would look at, they would have to discount the ability to actually turbo the bonds. And then we'd get back to the place where, okay, we probably don't have enough revenue to cover, you know, the debt at a one-twenty level.
So this one-twenty level on this particular area is what provides us? I'm just trying to understand, and the math of this isn't clear, there is the back-and-forth of this, what the city and taxpayers gain or potentially lose by taking us out of that waterfall? And there was a lot of data that went back and forth.
So I think, Kathy, part of it that's made that unclear is, when we were here, I think it was five weeks ago, the memos that we had and the words that we heard were that we didn't ever anticipate receiving any revenue from this waterfall. And to get in, to stay in it or get out of it was irrelevant, because we didn't ever anticipate there being anything of substance to be gleaned by standing in that waterfall. Simultaneously, we heard that it wasn't necessary for us to get out of the waterfall for these other activities to take place, that they were really looking for the community amenity tag on the market was the priority, and this waterfall issue was a secondary, maybe tertiary, kind of issue. So fast forward five weeks, we are now changing the points of discussion to that, if we don't get out of the waterfall, it's not going to happen, and that, in fact, there will be generated somewhere, somewhere up to $5 million over the course, over a short period of time, that would be collected in our place for the waterfall, that would be used to fund the build-out, and, you know, some of these other things, along with the half-percent sales tax. So I guess the part that is difficult for me to understand is, how did we get from here to here in these five weeks of time? Because it's significantly, it's a significantly different place that we're in now than where we were.
I guess I can't comment on the five weeks prior, but when looking at the deal today, and really that the costs, you know, are what they are, I mean, the costs haven't increased in a five-week timeframe. You know, crunching the numbers, when you get out to year sixteen, just if you're going to include the public market and everything else, when we have to start making a payment to the city in the first part of the waterfall, that payment unfortunately causes our coverage ratio to go down to one-ten. So when we looked at a turbo bond solution, I wouldn't say you're getting out of the waterfall, we're repositioning you in the waterfall, lower. However, you know, if there are projected revenues, and I know there was a discussion previously that, you know, there wouldn't be, you know, the city wasn't counting on excess, I don't want to put words in Angel's mouth, but, you know, as, you know, representing the developer, we always showed, you know, potential excess to the city, even back in 2015, to, as we were negotiating the deal, we're now showing something that's much, much higher on a total basis, and also higher on a net-present-value basis on projected excess. So, you know, this is a solution that we felt was a way to get the deal done, a way to fund a larger parking garage, a way to fund the North Market. And also, we thought it was a way to also potentially get the city even more money than originally presented back in 2015.
Yes, as far as conveying the message of the city not anticipating any revenue, certainly when we discussed this back in 2015, the plans did show for that, but we did not count on any of it. And as we've had significant conversation around the debt, and specifically the debt supporting the two parking garages and the roadway infrastructure that the city committed to, we wanted to make it very clear, and it still holds true, that the city was not relying on any revenue outside of blocks B and C, backed by that minimum service payment guarantee to meet that. So that is why our message has been all along, that we were not expecting any revenue. We certainly weren't trying to mislead council or anything along those lines. We've just consistently acted as if if it comes in, it's icing on the cake, and we can use it for other infrastructure within the area, whether it's the roundabout, whether it's the pedestrian bridge, a lot of other items that are eligible when we establish various TIFs.
So my question, oh, so my question then is, if these things have changed, and this is a good economic model, and if I understand the net present values, and thank you for providing that, that the economics are positive in this, simply from the change in the interest rate. But my question is, from a timing perspective, to make a complicated instrument more complicated, does the city have to take itself out entirely of that waterfall? Or is there the option, as long as a certain amount of that debt threshold can be covered by the revenues, which, if you look at this math, it sure looks to me like it can, then can we not get some of that and not have to wait until a later point in that? Do you know what I'm saying? It's sort of modify, because if the economic value is such that it is positive for both parties to not pay interest, that makes perfect sense to me. But do we have to fully step back, or do we only have to step back in a certain instance? And then that way, we're both benefiting from this change. Is that a feasible solution?
I think it's something we could look at.
That seems like a partnership opportunity to say, this is a positive thing to have happen, but if it's positive for both parties, then we could potentially as well. So that was my question.
I have a question for you, in looking at the agreement. I didn't understand that the city was totally out of it, on, I think it's Section 5, Number 8. The city is at the end of it, is also on Section 6. So I don't know if that's something you can explain, but my understanding is that we were just changing our position in the waterfall. And maybe you made a point that by doing the turbo, you're able to pay off more principal, and the city would realize maybe a larger amount in years sixteen through thirty, is, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. We're not saying you're coming out of the waterfall, we're simply adjusting the waterfall, where the city's, you know, maybe taking a step, maybe one or two steps down.
Right.
But ultimately being the beneficiary, if in fact we're able to, you know, prepay this debt quicker, which is the intent of this structure.
Essentially, the change is between the original development agreement and this is, instead of any excess being split 50/50, with 50% going to accelerate paydown of the debt, and the other 50% coming to the city, just for Block D, the whole amount in excess goes to pay down or accelerate the debt service payment, and then only after that would the city fall. So it's not totally removing us from the waterfall, it's just shifting it for just Block D, from 50% of the excess going to accelerate it to 100%.
Which has the effect of sort of protracting the length of time before we would see those excess payments. Right? So it could be, rather than seeing those excess payments in year, whatever, 2035, we would see them in 2040 instead.
If we saw them.
If we saw them, but the amount that would be projected for that would be greater than what we would have seen had we left us where we were. I think that's what I'm...
But my point is, if it's greater, and there is coverage, should we not get opportunity to have some of that along that? I mean, if it's not all needed, do we have to wait till the very end to participate in that? If you're following what I'm...
I am, but I think we would have to wait until that debt service was paid off, and this pays it off fast.
My point is, if there's excess over that, would that not be available to the city? That's the question I'm asking.
One of the things we've discussed with the developer team and their financial analysts is, you know, based on the model, there have to be targets for this turbo. And Angel made a really good point that I was coming up here to make, there's already a 50% turbo. We're moving to 100% turbo. We can have modifications in that, that if the turbo targets are hit, then any excess can flow on down the waterfall at that point. And we've had discussions about that.
Makes sense, yeah.
That makes sense to me, because as I understand it, the economics are positive to both parties, that the taxpayers should be able to participate in that earlier, if that in fact is the case.
And I think we've always had ourselves positioned in a way where, if this exceeds expectation, which it appears it's starting to, and things are going well, the more the upside, the better. We would, the city's not going to be left behind.
But we would have to make a change in this, to actually participate in that before the end, so that's...
But you're not giving it away forever, is...
Yeah, and I'm just saying, is, if the revenue projections are as positive as they look like, which makes this, and it does make sense, we should participate... look like, which makes this, and it does make sense, we should participate along the path and not have to wait. That is, and if that's economically feasible, I think that's the better position for the taxpayer.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
What, what can we do? So the, I, I get the revenue projection side, but the cost projection sides from the documents that we've received are that they've been 40% off coming to this point. Do we have any information available to us about what the cost projections, what, what a real cost projection might be? Or some assurances that, you know, if the cost projections go over by a certain percentage, then, then we, maybe we wouldn't lose our place in the waterfall because we might not, we, we might need to be more on the front lines than, than if we were last. The second half of my question is, you know, we're talking about waterfall position number six and number nine, or seven and eight, you know, do, do we have any ability to have any sharing with the seven and eight or is it six or nine?
We have some ability. Again, this is D Block. This is a specific change to the waterfall for this financing. We can adjust as necessary there in the mutual benefit of both the project and the city. We have some flexibility there provided that we pay down the debt fast enough.
Right, I mean, you know, maybe there's a seven A, B, and C split sort of thing rather than somebody be made whole and, and somebody else be waiting. So I'd like to explore those and, and I would like some assurances on the cost side. Just because we have been so far over budget, if we go over budget on that, this again, I suspect there won't be anything left for anybody.
Yeah, so a, a couple of things on cost. First, I would like either Terry or Matt Starr to give some sort of update on how close we are in terms of final costs on D Block. They're getting close to building. That usually means the costs start getting pretty locked in. Second, there have been cost limitations before. Costs have exceeded those limitations and it's up to the developer to pick up the tab. And in fact, they have on both B and C Block before. So all those protections remain in the agreements. But in terms of, you know, the practical cost side, I don't know, Terry or, or Matt?
Well, I, I mean, I get that, you know, it's a busy construction season and costs are going up, cost of materials and the other going up five, seven, maybe 10%. But the, the alarming part here of getting out of the waterfall, reposition in the waterfall is the 40% number. I, I understand that costs are escalating. All you have to do is drive around town and realize everyone's under construction. So therefore the demand, you know, supply and demand, cost's going up. But it, it's, it's the bigger number that I'd like to see some insulation with. I don't want to, you know, get out of, to place ourselves in a different point in line, have those costs go up and now there's not going to be anything left at, at the bottom of the waterfall.
Sure.
I think your question is how much volatility is there in those numbers today as compared to the original? The original estimates, the original agreement were pre-designed kind of schematic estimates. Block D has been fully designed, fully approved, and I think fully bid. So in terms of what those numbers are, those are numbers with very little volatility in them at this point.
Yeah, subject to contingency. Yeah, Jeremiah Thomas, I'm chief operating officer for Crawford-Hoying. Matt had a commitment for hockey practice tonight, so a very important one. So a couple of quick things. First of all, on the cost side, and I think, I think Greg pointed it out quite nicely. So the city doesn't have any exposure in or out of the waterfall to the extent there are overages. We're, we're guaranteeing that the public improvements are going to get done out of our dollars. Our only ability really to recapture those at the front end of the project is out of the bond proceeds that would be issued. So based on the waterfall that we put into, into the agreement, so whether it was 40% or, or 10%, whatever the overages would be, those are our costs. Those are not the city's cost. And that doesn't, those will never flow back to the waterfall regardless. And, and so I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that, that fact there. One of the other things with respect to some of the increase in cost, and it was hinted at, I think, a little bit by Josiah earlier, we have, we've, we've changed some of the uses on D Block compared to what we expected. One of those changes was we have about 90,000 square feet of additional office, office space. That's going to generate some additional income tax revenue and some other good things for the city. And that replaces what I think would have been 72-ish apartments. Don't quote me on that number, but it's, it's in the seventies of the number of apartments that would have replaced. It results in about an extra 200 parking spaces needed. And if you look at our current cost numbers, that's probably about $4 million of additional cost. But if you look at what the additional revenue, TIF revenue that's generated by the office versus the residential, that's only about $1 million of additional TIF revenue. So it's not a direct answer to your, your, your question, Councilwoman Grooms, but it is, when we're talking about some of the cost increases, some of them are from escalation. Some of them are from the competition of all the things that are being built around us. Some of them's just a mix change. And, and that, that's resulted in escalation in the garage specifically, pretty significant one because it grew. And, and so that's, that's, that's part of the reason. The other thing I'll say, and Crawford-Hoying, from our perspective, we've got no desire to be piggish on this. We, we, we want what we need to, to build public improvements. And whatever, whatever the waterfall ends up like, we're comfortable with. I think what we're hearing from our financial advisors is that this turbo bond feature is important to the marketability of the bonds. And the other thing related to that is to the extent that there is excess proceeds over whatever that threshold is, the theory behind putting 100% of those proceeds towards paying down debt actually holds no matter how big those proceeds become. So let, let's say, just thought experiment, let's say that we're trying to get an additional $100 out of the waterfall that will reduce the principal and therefore increase the back end proceeds. The effect of that $100 would be multiplied by double if we had $200 instead that went to advance pay down the principal and then for the city to get back into that. Again, if that's, if that's not the right direction to go for one reason or another, we have no desire to be piggish. We are looking to, to move quickly with a plan that works. If this isn't the plan that works, we understand that. But our, our belief is based on the advice that we've gotten from our financial advisors, that the more money that goes into the turbo feature, the better it is both for the marketability of the bonds and for the taxpayers of Dublin.
Yeah, and it was just my comment was the financial analyst, the analysis and the data that we received back today, yesterday, whatever, suggested that there was more than enough to make that interest payment and still have some. So, so my, my point was the timing of that. So I concur with you. That's why I say I think it, it seemed like it was the right instrument. I'm just saying from what the numbers that your team presented back, we should participate sooner.
If I could just add too, I think it's important when we talk about increasing the debt limit, whether it's on specifically block D or in general, we are making sure that that is on par with an increase in valuation. So if we were just to remove the cap to account for cost, cost escalations, but ignore the other side of the equation, by us having that 115 coverage for everything else or the 120 coverage for block D, that is how we're making sure that things aren't getting out of line. Because the value of those private improvements is generating the revenue in order to pay that debt service. So we're not giving a blank check to increase the debt service regardless of the reason why, but we're ensuring that there's a backstop there in terms of the, the private value that's being generated.
So Angel, is that a, is that, that ratio only calculated at the time the bonds are issued? So if there's fluctuation in real estate values and assessment values over the course, what happens to that ratio?
That's why there's a minimum service payment guarantee that is tied to the specific use of the property, whether it's commercial, residential, apartment.
So that really is the stop and that, and we're not changing that in this.
No.
In this particular thing. So, okay, so to me, if we can somehow craft what we just talked about here, that makes sense to me about saying if, if we've been able to cover that, that, and there is excess, it flows to the taxpayers instead of having to wait. I, I think that, I, I personally think that makes sense.
Does that require us to amend what's in front of us or can we just give you that direction to amend it as we pass, if it's passed?
Well, I, I would suggest that I, I think we've captured what, what that's about. I, I would look at my team and say, are you comfortable with, with the understanding of what, what's intended there?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, what I'm getting is a clear council direction that once the debt is provided for prior to other points in the waterfall, if projections are being exceeded, which we certainly hope they are, we're not counting on it, but we hope they are, then the city starts to get some revenue sooner. It's a timing.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, that seems, to me, that seems, to me, that seems like a partnership will make this change and, but then if, if it, if it works that way, that seems like a.
Well, if it holds true and these projections pan out, then whoever is seven and eight, it benefits them as well. I, I don't see how it couldn't.
Right.
If it's supposed to benefit us all the way at nine, it, by us stepping out of that position, then, then position holders number seven and eight should participate with, with us in, you know, being co-occupants of their, of that position.
Yep. And we can certainly draft that into the waterfall. I think we have that clear direction from.
Yeah, and I think we've always felt that we were going to take advantage of the upside and it wouldn't be a forever proposition that we would take ourselves out that way. But we, obviously what you're saying is make sure that's shored up and we will, we will make that happen.
I'm not sure whether there are other issues, but as to the waterfall issue, Jeff's on that, John?
No, no, I'm, I'm with.
Okay, so just with that issue, can we reflect that on what we vote on tonight or do we need to wait and vote on this later?
I think, I think we can take that as direction and incorporate that in the agreement unless you need to read the agreement and make sure it's in there. But if you feel we've got the, I feel we've got the direction we need, we've got all the folks in the room, Crawford-Hoying didn't get up and walk out. So I'm assuming I'm getting a north inside.
So we're getting, we're getting a yes nod from the developer as well is what I'm hearing. I think that's kind of important.
Yeah.
I, I just want to confirm that what we're talking about is to the extent that proceeds exceed the, exceed the projections that have been included in our financial analysts' model for purposes of retiring the turbo bonds on, on the basis on which he's marketing the bonds. And if that's the case.
It's even better what you, than what you expected then.
If that's the case, I think we're, we're in agreement. I, I would say that, I, I would say that there is some possibility that it may even be better for the city to go the original way just because of the advanced pay down of principal and accelerating therefore when the city is top on the waterfall. But we're neutral on the point so long as we can meet the projections in the, in, in the waterfall that just.
And the key is the way they can present it in the issuance of the bond.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Remind me where the money, the waterfall money, the excess goes then? It has to go into that block? Is that correct? What, what, is there any, is there any stipulations on that?
So excess money has to eventually benefit the area. It doesn't have to be with.
It doesn't have to be in that block, but it has to be in Bridge Park.
Could be bridge debt, could be park debt.
Or benefits Bridge Park. So it, it can be in the general area. It doesn't have to be within the boundaries, but there has to be a clear tie between whatever we're spending the money on and Bridge Park. It's got to be a very obvious.
Just like a TIF then, basically that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so on this waterfall issue, if we can put that issue to bed, does anybody have any other issue on that question or comment on that issue? Okay, and you know what we need to do.
I, I just want to make sure that the question about the construction cost sort of, for lack of a better word, cap or control was, was satisfied.
Did you have more on that, Chris?
I have just a comment that you made, that you made about the fact that you felt that the original would have been better for the city. Can you explain why you felt that way?
Sure. And, and the, the reason is, is just the, if, if 100% of those excess proceeds go to, to pay the turbo portion of the payment, then what happens is there will be an additional principal reduction that is even in excess of what we've modeled.
Okay.
Which means that the proceeds that come back to the city on the tail end will, will come back even faster.
Faster.
And the amount of interest that is earned on that principal will be even smaller and therefore there's even more proceeds available to the city on the tail end of the waterfall because of that. So the theory holds, no matter how fast we repay the bonds, the faster the bonds are repaid, the better it is for the city. There's probably some modeling points in between on a, on a cash basis where there, there may be reasons why the city feels otherwise at certain points.
It depends on the cost of capital too at that point, that that's, and we're, and we're in a rising interest rate situation, so.
That's always the case.
Right, exactly.
You know, I, you know, I do, and I sure Mike remembers that, and I do remember the fact that developers are picking up all the overages, which we appreciate. And I think, you know, there's a possibility that your suggestion might be better for us and although it seems to be consensus here that they're willing, they want to jump into the waterfall a little earlier. But I have a question for you. You mentioned, you changed the building and then you said that because we were taking in office, you were going to need more parking space over the condo. Can you just give us a little information on that instead of the apartments?
Yeah, I mean.
What is it, $25,000 for parking space now? I don't really remember.
It, it's, it's in that neighborhood. It, it's slightly different depending on garage construction type, but for this construction type, and I don't know off the top of my head what it is for, for this particular garage building, but structured parking with, of the type that we're building in Dublin is 25,000 is not, would not actually even be incredibly high right now, so. And, and, I'm sorry, back to the office question that you asked.
Yeah, because we, you know, we appreciate the change.
Absolutely.
It's, it's fantastic for our community to have taxable office space instead of units. So we do appreciate that. But can you just explain the additional expense of that on the parking side?
It, it's partly just a, a matter of zoning code, partly a matter of obvious need that if you, if you multiply out the parking constants that you use when building office space versus the parking constants that you use when building apartments for the same building, it's about, and we looked at it this week, I think it was about 200 additional spaces that we're building in the garage, just, just by virtue of bringing the additional office in. And from a pure TIF value basis, the additional TIF proceeds that are generated from the office use doesn't, doesn't make up that difference. And this is back of the napkin calculations, but we'd calculated about $4 million of additional parking and then about $1 million of additional TIF proceeds. So the, from a pure TIF basis, it doesn't quite make up that difference. Obviously, there's a lot of other things that we all like about having office. The tax, the increased tax revenue is great for, for the city, of course. We like the additional, we like the additional daytime presence in Bridge Park because it, it helps our, our community. So there's a lot of reasons that it benefits all of us. We're very happy to have it, but it does, as compared to the original development plan, it is an additional cost on the public side.
Yeah, so it's 200 spaces, you're saying?
It's 200 spaces.
Times $25,000.
Right.
Okay, that's, thank you.
I have two. The make-whole premium. Oh, shoot. What's going digital thing is? So when we change the make-whole premium, it's essentially a release of them if we decide to retire any of those bonds early, then, then the city would have the financial obligation to make the bondholder whole versus Crawford-Hoying having the obligation to make the bondholder whole.
To the extent there's any obligation, which it's dependent on a pretty complex mathematical formula that will change based on interest rates 15 years from now.
But somebody must think it's likely because we're changing the agreement to, to add this.
Now, I, I think really what it was is the original agreement didn't provide for a make-whole premium. In the course of, this relates solely to the A Block financing. In the course of doing that financing, we thought the developer made a persuasive case that having a make-whole premium for that financing made good economic sense for everyone, for the project, for the city. However, because it wasn't provided for in the original agreement, we thought it was appropriate to bring that back to council at the next opportunity. This is the First Amendment.
And how did it come to the decision that the, that the city would be responsible for the make-whole premium?
Well, it's the project responsible. So if there's a refinancing, it would be picked up by the refinancing bonds at that point. If and when we do a refinancing.
And that would be refinancing of the city's debt?
It'd be the refinancing of the A Block debt, which is Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority debt. So it'd be, in essence, added to that, the amount of the bonds that are issued to refinance the existing A Block.
So it'd be like a rollover cost that would go additionally into the refinance?
Yes.
Okay. My last question is relative to the bed tax grant and the 25 and 35% designations. And as I understand this now, our increased contribution to 35% to the Convention and Visitors Bureau is 10% greater than what we collect. Visitors Bureau is 10% greater than what we collect on the two existing hotels. And so, the city is essentially contributing an additional 10% to the Convention and Visitors Bureau on behalf of Crawford Hoyng for those two hotel bed tax grants. This says the administration has requested and the developer has agreed to the deduction to 35% for hotels other than the H2 and AC. So, later this evening, we have some hotels in additional blocks. These hotels, we would not have to subsidize at that 10% as we do these two existing today.
That's correct. So, in the original agreement before, so the grant is 25% of the bed taxes after we deduct the 25% for the Convention, Convention Visitors Bureau. After that agreement, we bumped that up to 35%. We're trying to match that here in the agreement to keep it neutral for the city.
There's nothing in this that changes the amount of money that the Convention and Visitors Bureau gets.
Right.
I, I get that, because the city is paying that portion out of fun, out of those funds that come in.
Right.
Correct.
Yep. So, the 35% deduction would apply to any F and G Block hotels, really any hotels other than the original.
Is there any opportunity to revisit the 25% that's in the original agreement so that we don't, we are no longer required for that 10% subsidy, or...
If there gets to be a refinancing of the A Block bonds, that is a possibility.
That's when we could...
Right, and the agreement provides...
Adjust that to the 35%.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and this will be for all hotels, just not the, the next ones in?
Any hotels in the Bridge Park Community Authority, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Ann.
Mayor Peterson.
Sir.
Yeah, I, I would just suggest that the motion, a motion be structured to accept the ordinance, but also that it, that the agreement reflect the changes relative to the, to the waterfall.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass Ordinance 70-18 and incorporate Greg's comments with regard to the waterfall provision and the things that he said in his discussion.
I'll second it.
Second. Ann, on the motion.
Second.
I seconded, sorry, I'm...
Does that cover it? Does that...
Is that what you needed, Dana?
Yeah, so, pardon. Yeah, I would suggest a motion to amend Section 1 of the ordinance by inserting language after, where it says, "In the form presently on file with the Clerk of Council," by inserting language to state, "and is modified consistent with discussion of council regarding the revenue waterfall provisions."
I make a motion we amend exactly how Thaddeus just said.
I'll second it.
Now, there's a second. Ann.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ann, on the ordinance.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Okay, thank you, appreciate it, fellas. Ordinance 71-18, Ann.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an assignment of a real estate purchase, contract, and other necessary documents to acquire a 28.84 acre, more or less, fee simple interest for three parcels located on Eiderman Road from the Robert Wyler Company.
Donna. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, members of council. There are no changes since the first reading, and staff recommends your authorization to proceed with the acquisition of property. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Ann.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Introduction, first reading ordinances, Ordinance 72-18, Ann.
Accepting the annexation of 12.0 acres, more or less, from Washington Township, Franklin County to the City of Dublin. Petitioners are Chemco Inc., the Duwok Trust, Street Real Estate LLC, One Limited, and the City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina. Thad.
Good evening, members of council. Council last saw this annexation when it passed the services resolution. We are now at the stage, following the commissioner's approval of the annexation in July, the stage where council is asked to act on the annexation, either accepting or rejecting it by ordinance. If it is approved at the second reading and public hearing, which is scheduled for the November 5 meeting, then this ordinance will be ineffective 30 days after passage, and the property will become part of the City of Dublin. Unlike most areas that are annexed in, this is in the Innovation District Zone, and so it will be zoned to Research Flex District when it comes into the city. That allows office uses, data centers, educational uses, and industrial uses. Any other use would require the property owner to obtain rezoning. In sum, staff recommends approval of the ordinance at the next reading.
Any questions from council or comments?
I had a, just a, this is part of the Fischel Park, is that Fischel Industrial Park, correct? And it's only a couple of the parcels.
That's correct.
And so, was there ever any thought to, like, bringing the whole piece in, or why is it, why is it fragmented? Do we know?
I do not know. Can you, you know, this is the application that came in from the property owner.
It just seemed odd to me that these two pieces, but the, one, one other question would be, Chemco, do we have any kind of environmental issue with, with their operations and what they do?
No.
Do they currently have water and sewer provided?
There, there is water and sewer available immediately. You might recall that we didn't run a water sewer line along Fischel Drive to, to serve another adjacent property.
But they couldn't tap into it prior to annexation?
No, they cannot, correct.
So, I would suspect that's probably the driver is water. They're probably having EPA issues of having to handle all of that on site.
My question was, do we have a, something that glows in the dark over there that we're bringing in?
That's what I thought. No, I, I think, you know, if we were going to take possession of the property, we would do an environmental study to figure that out.
Well, I understand.
But I, I don't foresee that that's, that's particularly an issue. And the, the city did extend those, those lines in that immediate area, pretty much with the assumption that the properties with Fischel Drive would come in at some point.
Okay.
So, they're working on a septic sort of system at, at some point?
That's correct.
It, it could be as simple as a septic system, it might be cheaper than replacing a septic system.
They have had issues there over the years, for sure. We know that.
All right, we'll see you back on November 5th for the rest of that story. Ordinance 73-18, Ann.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Ohio Health Corporation to induce a lease or purchase a facility to retain and expand its non-clinical office and its associated non-clinical operations and workforce, all within the city authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Colleen.
Good evening. We have been working and in discussions with Ohio Health regarding the future of its non-clinical jobs in the City of Dublin. They are in multiple lease locations throughout the city, most of those leases ending in the next year to two years. The company is hopeful to consolidate those leases into one facility, roughly 100,000 square feet or more, and they would prefer to own that facility. So, we have been looking and identifying buildings for them. The proposal before you tonight for introduction includes an 11-year performance incentive that is on a sliding scale, anywhere from 20% to 17% over the course of the term. It would be capped at $400,000 annually, and they would be required to reach non-clinical job payroll growth. Additionally, we propose a one-time $600,000 retention grant that is tied to the acquisition of a 100,000 square foot minimum facility within the city. They would also have to receive occupancy during 2019 to receive that grant. And we're also proposing a $50,000 technology grant to get a new facility hooked up to their Dublin system, which we would renew their strands of fiber that they're currently using within the City of Dublin. So, the total package is a $5.05 million incentive. This would retain 1,300 non-clinical jobs to the City of Dublin, representing an $80 million payroll. The company will be present at second reading, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, um, the Dublin, the $50,000 grant, is that actually laying connectivity, or what is, what is that money?
That is to connect the new facility to their ring.
And so, we would do that with one of the partners that we, that we have that does this, or is this...
Correct. We would, we would work with Fischel, who is our contractor on all of our Dublin connectivity.
And why the stipulation between clinical and non-clinical, just from my education?
Thank you. The clinical jobs are at the hospital, and we don't really see them picking up and moving away. This would be for the, the non-clinical positions that are in leased office space throughout the City of Dublin. They hide pretty well. A lot of people don't know just how large their non-clinical office presence is here in the city. And with all of those leases facing expiration, we want to ensure that they stay here long term, so just as important as the medical jobs.
Any other questions from council? All right, we'll see you back on November 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Public hearing on resolutions, Resolution 63-18, Ann.
Authorizing the city manager to enter a memorandum of agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation/Drive Ohio regarding autonomous vehicle testing within the boundaries of the City of Dublin.
Dana.
Good evening, members of council. As council's aware, and as you received a briefing as recently as your last meeting about the efforts in the 33 corridor, the 33 Innovation Corridor, as we call it, and the, the work that we're doing in the area of connected and autonomous vehicles and the deployment of the technology related to that, you're also familiar with the fact that we did form a council of governments in partnership with Union County, the City of Marysville, and the Union County Port Authority. And as I cited in my memo, we've had great success with that council of governments to date. The first was the deployment of the fiber optic backbone funded by the Ohio Department of Transportation and Drive Ohio, which allocated 236 optical fibers to the COG, the Council of Governments, for its use in administration. That is an over $12 million investment by the state to put the fiber optic backbone within the US 33 right-of-way between Dublin and as far as West Liberty, connecting the City of Marysville, the Transportation Research Center, so forth, and bringing that fiber optic loop back down Industrial Parkway as a redundant local loop. Not long after we got great progress with that, the COG essentially was awarded a $5.9 million US Department of Transportation grant to deploy the tech, the technology for autonomous and connected vehicles on top of that fiber optic loop. So, what this is doing, this memorandum of agreement, is acknowledging that that fiber optic loop and the testing for that will actually come into the City of Dublin via the 33 corridor, Industrial Parkway, will come into the Dublin system and connect to local data centers here. As we briefed you at your last meeting, we intend to not only participate as we get certain technologies and off of the grant itself, but the city, through the capital budget which you adopted tonight, is also going to leverage above and beyond the connected autonomous vehicle efforts to do smart parking, testing of, and data collection around connected vehicles and roundabouts. We think we'll be the only country doing that, only city doing that in the country, I should say. So, anyway, having said that, this agreement with ODOT and Drive Ohio is simply an acknowledgement that the city's participating in the, the effort of the US 33 corridor and enables us to begin the testing in partnership with them relative to connecting autonomous vehicles. So, all these different pieces and parts come together. This is one of the many pieces that help puts that, puts the partnership in place.
Thank you, Dana. And, Ann, I don't know, Christina, did you introduce it in your soft-spoken voice?
Not, but I will introduce it.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of Dana regarding 63-18?
I have one question, and I don't know that it's necessarily tied to this. I, I think this is great. We had spoken a bit about actually having our communications team work with the, the projects, the varied projects, to begin to promote this, et cetera. Just sort of, where are we on that? It's all seems to be becoming more concrete, if we will, no point...
Yeah, actually, the council of governments, it's, it's interesting timing for that question. The council of governments did engage together in the hiring a, a firm to help us work on a branding solution to that. We engaged collectively, an organization called Adept Marketing. They are going to be showing their initial results of that study to the council of governments at their meeting on November 14. And so, the board members there will take a look at that and determine the way ahead. We will brief you on that as that starts to, to take, starts to move forward. But it's really, I think it's going to start telling that story. I think it's taken us a year or so to figure out how to tell that story, and I, and, and we, and this marketing firm, I think, is doing a great job of putting all that together and into something that can be branded.
One quick question. We, we talk about data all the time, data, data ownership, opportunities to take advantage of, of marketing or selling data, that sort of thing. And I, I noticed in this agreement that there is an agreement to share data during this, but what is the city's position on managing the data that we do get from these opportunities with the smart corridors and such?
Yeah, certainly, great, great question. Not only the, the testing of the, of these types of technologies, but the data it collects, obviously, we believe has great value. This, these kind of discussions from a policy perspective are happening at all levels of government, federal, state, and local. And we've had much dialogue at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission and our Smart Region Task Force and in the data task force that they have, as well as the COG itself, in terms of how that data would be managed and, and owned, if you will. And in that we are in these partnerships like this, you know, the data would be shared. And in those areas where the city itself, through its own mechanisms and technologies, would gather data, would be its own. So, I, I do believe that there is the opportunity for local government to monetize that data over time, as well as other levels of government. Everyone's just trying to figure out those policies right now. So, it is at the forefront of all of this, and it's, it's really, you know, the data, as you point out, that's going to be important about driving this evolving industry going forward.
Any other questions from council? Ann.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Resolution 64-18, Ann.
Resolution in support of Dublin City Schools.
I'll introduce this, and I greatly appreciate, Dana, the language of, that staff was able to put together. It, it kind of summarizes the importance of our school system and having a healthy school system. And I see Board President Scott Melody is here, as well as Dr. Holy. I'll give you guys an opportunity to comment on this legislation if you want to in just a second. But the resolution itself is pretty short, to the point, and it says, "A strong school district is a, is vital to the economic well-being and future success of the Dublin community. And the quality of the school district is an important factor in bringing new businesses to our community, thus ensuring stable property, property values and opportunities for its residents. And the Dublin City Schools continue to serve an important role in the success of the Dublin community by attracting families and businesses who are seeking quality education in the city. And whereas the continued success of the Dublin City Schools is important to the continued success of the City of Dublin in providing a sound education and better employment opportunities to the future workforce." And the points that the legislation makes are three, that an excellent school system is the backbone of our community, a strong school district attracts businesses, builds our workforce, builds a strong economy, and maintains our property values, and the young people of our community are better prepared for their future thanks to the outstanding education that they receive through the Dublin City Schools. And I know that Dr. Holy and, and Dana work and their staffs, staff respective staffs work together tirelessly in not only the, on the relationship, but in the partnership as well. And you can look around our community and you can see where these things take place from, for examples, the roadway and the parking garage along Indian Run, the property acquisition there, the Dublin, and then, and tying all the schools into the Dublin, and the, and the agreement over on Bridge Street, and the amount of funds that that provides to the school system for technology is just, are, they're absolutely phenomenal relationships. And all of us, as council members, have opportunities from time to time to speak to different companies that are thinking about locating here or staying here. And the number one question on their minds is almost always, what are the schools like? And that's the number one question. And so, a healthy, dynamic school system is vital to our healthy, dynamic community. And what you and, and what Dr. Holy, what you have done, and Scott and the board, we greatly appreciate what you've done for our community. You allow many of the things that we do, you allow us to do it because we have created that environment and that community where people want to be. And, you know, it just occurs to me, we have all these different sayings about Dublin, and it's very simple, it's just, it's simply better in Dublin. It just is. And so, I don't know, anybody else on council want to comment? I'll also give those guys an opportunity if they want to. Kathy?
I, I think John said it best last time. You, you can't be a great city without great schools. And we have great schools. Thank you.
Doc, Scott, you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Holy. Great to have you.
Thank you.
So, you ducked out of your meeting, huh?
Yeah, we finished early.
Good for you.
So, but thank you for the opportunity, just very, very quickly. Yeah, thank you for those kind words, and we, we feel that we have a, a great relationship with the city council. Thank you for all the support. Thanks for being great leaders. I said that last time. I listened to discussions tonight. You're dealing with really important things that will matter not just today, but 20 years from now. And just having the support that you express for our schools is greatly meaningful. We have two weeks till Election Day. Our strategy has been going into homes and having discussions with residents. We want people to vote, and we want people to vote informed. And so, we've been doing our best to make sure that people understand issue five and the benefits that that will create to not just our school system, but also our community. Thank you for the kind comments last meeting. I really appreciated that. The word, we've had that come back to us. You'd be surprised, you probably have the analytics about how many people watch your council meetings on TV here. And so, just the number of people that have expressed the gratitude of the comments that were made last time is, is deeply moving. So, thank you for that. And then also, for Vice Mayor Grimes, congratulations on the state championship that came to your household this weekend with Tyler on the Jerome Golf Team. So, I'm sure that was a, a, a big celebration in the Grimes household. So, thank you.
Scott?
Okay, Mayor Peterson and members of council, on just on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank you again for your comments in support of the schools' last meeting and in the resolution tonight. Now, we truly appreciate your leadership for the city and support of the schools, and we look forward to the continued partnership between the two entities, the Dublin community. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Hey, a shout out, Doc, about the Emerald Campus, the open house. When is that? I saw an email about.
This Thursday, 5 to 8.
And anybody can come in and just take a look and walk around the Emerald Campus?
Student tours and bring your, bring your children as well. We'd love to show it off and really plant the seeds for future students to attend that wonderful facility.
Absolutely. It's a fantastic thing to walk through, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Anne?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Alito.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Moving on to the other portion of our agenda, basic plan, Bridge Park Block F.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you all don't mind, I start the presentation together for F and G, and then break them apart with your actions that are before you tonight, as they are immediately adjacent to one another. So, city council is asked to review basic plans for blocks F and G within the Bridge Park development. And as you know, since these blocks are part of the development agreement, it is provided for in the zoning code that city council is the reviewer and required reviewing body of the basic plans. Here's the geography of the two blocks. We are north and south of Bridge Park Avenue, and we are just east of Mooney, and then Dale Drive is the other adjacent street there on the east side. Here's my biggest present of pet peeve, changing orientations on you, but I can't fit it on the slide any other way. Outlined in yellow are blocks F and G, and then outlined in blue are all the blocks that have received approvals. So, there are five totals now that are, either have been constructed or under construction, and those two fit right in. And they were also part of the very original actions that council took way back in 2015 for preliminary planning purposes. The actions that council is, in the code required to do tonight are approve, deny, or table waivers. There are six requested for F block, there are four requested in G block. The applicant is requesting approval of the basic plans for each of the blocks. Both happen to have seven conditions. Both were also recommended for approval at the most recent meeting of the administrative review team, and both have had some informal feedback and discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the last action that council will be required to take is determining the required reviewing body for any of the future applications for these two blocks. Starting with F, which would then be on the south side of Bridge Park Avenue, we're looking at a, at a lot that is about 2.3 acres, and the proposal is for essentially three buildings. The northernmost building would be a hotel with an access drive for drop-off, similar to what is in existence at the AC Hotel currently. That would be a private drive within this block. Parking garage in the center of the block with a liner that is also intended to be hotel use on the east and the north side. And then an office building on the southern portion of the block, which, similar to what we've experienced with A block, probably something that would come at a later time in the final site plan. The applicant has provided some massing diagrams, as again, this is the basic plan review, so there is not a whole lot of detail that is required at this step, but wanted to show how the buildings and their forms fit within, within Bridge Park and also amongst each other. And then here is a view of the hotel, and from an applicant's standpoint, it appears as though that this building is likely the one that will move forward the soonest out of all of the ones we're looking at tonight. And then massing of the garage and surrounding buildings there again. And then the applicant has provided some architectural character images that they've been working with a slightly different team there on the architectural side and are providing, while complimentary, some different image, some different characteristics for these two blocks to fit in, but also set themselves apart a little bit architecturally. From an open space perspective, the applicant has provided what we typically see at this stage. With the open spaces shown at the, at the final site plan, we would have a little bit more detail as to how the numbers and the uses exactly shake out, but at this point, the requirements appear to be met. And then the applicant has also done a little bit more of a detailed landscaping scheme where those spaces take a little bit more shape. Planning Commission had encouraged the applicant to take a look at providing more green in the open spaces as opposed to just open space. So, that was one of the discussions that the applicant heard from the Planning Commission. In terms of the six waivers requested, I can go through them really quickly. There is one requested for the garage, and that is adjacent to the garage in B block. So, there is a waiver requested for incompatible building types because they are unlined in that particular elevation. There are waivers related to front property line coverage, and that has really to do with the shape of the blocks as they're existing. So, Dale Drive curving within that area, which the other streets that were created or constructed within the blocks don't do that. So, there are some geographic and predetermined conditions that are having to be addressed with these waivers. And then there is another one there on the, on the west side of the parking garage, having to do with the liners and the drive coming into and out of the garage. There is a request for increasing the story height for the hotel that would be on the ground story, and it has, again, to do with, with topography. So, it is sitting higher there at Dale and is coming down slightly. And then, request is for garage entry in the, on a, on Mooney Street, which would actually technically be required on the sides of the building, but given the shape of the block and the location of the building, that can't be achieved here. And then lastly, the code would require an additional exit lane for this building with the number of parking spaces required. And again, from a site constraint standpoint, there really isn't any room to achieve that, and circulation can still be accommodated with what is provided here. So, with that, I'm going to pause for a second, but the applicant is requesting approval of these six waivers from council tonight. And then, the applicant is also requesting approval of the basic plan with the seven conditions that we have in your, in your memo and on the screen. And again, that is also what ART has recommended to city council. And then for the required reviewing body determination, your choices would be having city council be the future required reviewing body. You could appoint a planning and zoning commission, or you could also have the administrative review team be the body that would, the decision maker on these future applications. So, if I could pause here, okay.
You're pausing. You want us to have questions about just this portion first? Any questions?
Can you back up to the waivers page there? So, I have a number of concerns about this, the, the way this site is laid out. And I understand that they want a waiver for a seven-story building for the future F4 office building.
That's actually G. It's the G, it's the G building. The G office building.
Okay, I thought, I didn't get the right.
At this point, this office building is shown as four stories, but again, the applicant is also here to elaborate if you do.
Okay. Sorry, I had the wrong bundle of papers.
It is confusing. I'm sorry, I agree with you.
Okay, so, the, the hotel is looking for a waiver to six stories.
No, the, the, the building is actually permitted to be that height. It's the height of.
Ground floor only?
First story, yes, where our maximum would be 16 feet, and they're up to 20 in a certain area. They are also having a restaurant space or commercial space there as well.
Is that the lobby area where they're asking for the extra height?
He's scurrying as quickly as he can around the video equipment.
Russ Hunter, Private Development, 6640 Riverside Drive. The, the 20-foot ground story height, it's actually very similar to what we have in the B and C blocks. So, if you think about the building that Ram is in is a great example of that. It's about eight feet different from the east side of the building to the west side of the building, topography-wise. So, if we're 20 feet high on the, on the Mooney Street side, we're 12 feet high on the, on the Dale Street side, which is just about the absolute minimum that we can get in order to make sure that everything functions. So, we're trying to kind of split the difference as best we can. We don't want the building to be too tall, but we want to make sure that that, that first floor is usable throughout the entirety of it.
Yeah, we had a, quite an extensive discussion on your hotel over that, where we waived that just for dramatic effect to make that a much more interesting hotel. It really worked out.
The AC?
Yeah. We had a discussion about that, and they were trying to crimp the, the height of your ceilings, and we waived that. And it was a good move. It's a good-looking.
Thank you.
Lobby.
You finished?
Yep.
Okay. So, I have some concerns about the F4 office building, primarily because most of the green space is clustered around a, a building that isn't designed yet. And we're calculating this green space into a building that I suspect when it comes to fruition, that that green space is going to change significantly. So, I didn't get any images or any design details or anything for the F4 office building. And I don't know if we can really lay out a portion of the block that doesn't have a building on it. I don't know how we can do a basic plan review for a block that doesn't have all of its buildings on it. Because what happens on that space is going to profoundly impact the balance of the block, adjacent, compatible uses, things of that nature. Also read in there about the parking garage not needing any additional exits because it was unlikely that it would empty at a single point in time. And with all of the events that we're looking to have scheduled here over the course of time, unless the intention is to not hold those events, those garages are going to, with relative frequency, empty at the same time. Also, I kind of wonder if there isn't some sort of, any hazards with only having one exit to a parking structure of that type. If, if a car were to break down, if something were to happen to the one entrance, that there would be no other opportunity to exit the structure. So, I'm really not in favor of the waiver. We, we have an entire block here to design to exit this building. And I'm sure that if we design it creatively, then we certainly would have the opportunity to provide an exit for it. I, I would like to understand a little better why the section of, I don't have the street named that's adjacent to the hotel opposite Bridge Park Avenue.
To the south of it?
Yes.
So, that is an unnamed private drive proposed.
Okay. We're putting private, a private drive in here?
That's the proposal, yeah. Which is the same condition as it is at, at the AC Hotel as well. And that portion of Mooney that is coming in near the A1 office building, that's private as well.
I, I didn't see that portion of it being a private road. So, I, I don't know, you know, we're kind of artificially pinching that, that site down over there, and, you know, it's very difficult to lay something out for the F4. So, I, I would be inclined of, to, can we approve a partial block? Do we have to go with the entire block at one time? It's.
Yeah, you could. You could ultimately almost do basic site plan approvals for each of the buildings that we have details for. You could.
Because would it be likely to need some private roadway access between F2 and F4? Or some sort of connector? I'm assuming that this parking garage is designed to facilitate parking for this potential office building?
And on that end, I would love for Russ to give you, give us your parking spiel. And in terms of the connector, though, I don't think from working with our engineering division that we would be in any way in favor of breaking that block up more for vehicular use. So, I would say that is unlikely.
You know, okay, that was my parking spiel. Thanks. So, so, yeah, with these two blocks in particular, we have, we obviously have a little bit more information that we're coming into this with now. And I'm, I'm specifically talking about parking ratios and, and parking provided with the existing B and C blocks. And so, what we, at first anecdotally began to realize, and, and now we're seeing empirical evidence of, is, is that we are overparked in those two blocks, and, and by a fairly significant amount. So, we've been out there, Matt Starr has been out there, or I've been out there with a little clicker. And the, we've taken probably about 25 different samples so far, different times. So, Saturday mornings during the, the Dublin market, or Thursday at 6:30 when the, when the restaurants are all full, trying to really get a good understanding of how the parking is being utilized. The day that it was utilized the most, now, this is for C block, because C block right now is 100% occupied. So, the offices are now built out, with the exception of about 6,000 square feet in building C3. The residential is largely occupied now, and all of the restaurants are completed. And we counted 373 spaces that were occupied. That was the most that we've ever counted in that block. Now, that's not to say that it's going to be the most going forward, but what that left us is 506 spaces that weren't being used. This was, was kind of a, I would say, it, it was a wake-up call that, oh my gosh, wow, that's a lot of spaces. And anecdotally, you can go in, you can always find a parking space, which is great. But it was a heck of an investment that we all made to build these garages in order to support the development. So, the way that we've been looking at blocks F and G is, is really wanting to take advantage of the parking that we already have existing, knowing full well that as this goes to final site plan, it's going to take a careful analysis to make sure, both from the city's standpoint and from our own developer's standpoint, because the last thing we want to do is, is build businesses, build office space, build retail space, that we can't support parking. Our tenants won't, they won't, they won't lease the space. At any rate, we clearly know that we've got a lot of parking, and we want to make sure that we take advantage of it. And so, that's really why, you know, in the past, as we've come to the basic site plan, we've probably cooked it a little bit more than we wanted to or needed to, because we didn't have as lot of, a lot of these bigger questions out there. But in this case, we really wanted to take the basic site plan to heart and, and focus on the layouts and the, the building uses and the sizes specifically of these garages. Because if we were to build garages to support these large office buildings, or say, F4, the hotel, to pure zoning standards, what we'd end up is a much larger garage on both the F block and the G block, and much less. F Block and the G Block and much less investment in the office space or the hotel space. And I, we just don't think that that's really good for anybody. So that, that is, that is really what's driving a lot of the decisions on these blocks and, and why we're here tonight to talk about it.
So what has changed from the original estimates that they're off by like 50% or more?
Parking is, is an art and a science and neither. I mean, it's really, really tough and especially in, in this day and age. And the reason why I say that is because it's, it's hard to understand the Uber factor. Not only that, you know, this is a site that is well-connected both with bike, with bike paths and the sidewalks. And, and it's, and then so you've got the shared analysis, you've got a lot of things coming together and zoning codes were, were written for very specific uses. So you look at an office space, typically we would, we would say, okay, that's going to be four cars per thousand square feet, which, which equates to 250 square foot per person. And so there's all these, all these formulas that have gone into those over the years. And they used to work for more suburban locations where there wasn't a lot of sharing going on. Now, I'll say that the Bridge Street District Code already took some of that, that shared parking into consideration and lowered some of those numbers. So when we went through the B and C block, we thought that they made sense. You know, like offices, example, wasn't four per thousand, it was three per thousand. So the restaurants uses, all of the uses were a little bit lower than they might typically be, you know, in a, say a development that you would have done 10 years ago. That being said, we, we just couldn't fully grasp what it would be like once it was fully built. And now it's, now it's built. And now we have a block, like I said, it's almost 100% complete and we're out there day after day after day and we're seeing entire floors that are largely unused. And so in our minds, it just makes no sense to continue to build parking garages because we only see the use of those going down, you know, as, as we continue to see ride-sharing, as we continue to see smart cars. There's, there is a, a transition happening in, in transportation and it, and it's, it's only going to be in less parking spaces, not more.
You know, anecdotally, my wife and I go over there quite a bit and we'll park at the garage across from Cap City even to go to AC because we want to make that walk and be part of that, that environment. So, you know, I don't know whether that figures into anything, but, you know, I think a lot of other people are using that, that same kind of strategy in terms of where they park. So it's not necessarily exactly across from where you're, where you're going or-
And that's why we think, you know, so like F Block is a, is a great example. The B Block Garage, that, that, that B Block isn't as occupied as C Block is yet. So we've still got some homework to do to understand exactly how many parking spaces we're going to have extra and how many we're going to need. But what I, we, there's no reason to think that B Block is going to be any different than C Block with roughly the same uses. So it's set up beautifully to support F Block. C Block is set up beautifully to support C Block. So we, you know, like I said, we just think it makes a lot of sense. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. You know, we talked about planning and zoning. One of the things that, that there was concern was the drive. And as you were saying, there's a lot more Ubering and there'll be autonomous vehicles. And there was a, there was a sense that this was a little, I want to say, underdeveloped, wouldn't stack enough cars for dropping off at the hotel. And here's the other thing that I, I think, I think about the walkability and it's a basic concept plan, so we have to think about how it works with everything else. A connector vehicle, let's just say we get the Dublin D connector vehicle and we, we have runs through there and you've got spaces to stack six cars and that's all you have. It's a beautifully big hotel with, you know, I know the parking is on, I don't know what street that is, this, on the west, but there was, there was concern about whether or not we have enough transit mobility through these spaces because it's pretty narrow in there. Can you speak to that?
How many spaces were, it was four or six? It is six?
Yeah, it's six, I think.
Yeah, so it's about six spaces that it can stack right in, in front of that-
Right.
Right in front of that entry. And the, the roadway is 22, so it's, it's the same width as a typical two-way?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's a typical two-way that runs through the entire district, just without the parallel parking spaces on either side.
I mean, it's, I mean, six cars and then the street is pretty much stopped, more than six, right? You're gonna, you're gonna end up waiting for your turn. Is there a place to park here other than the six stacking spaces? There, there is no other space right in front of the hotel?
Well, the six could, could fit without going into the, the drive aisle. And so then after that, you would, you would-
You'd be in the drive aisle.
And then you would go to either one of, there's a, there's an entrance to the B Block, it's off the sheet, but there's an entrance to the B Block Garage directly across from that curb cut, that access drive as it, as it ends there in Mooney Street. So I, and, and I don't know that the AC has more than six spaces. It's, it, I mean, they're actually roughly about the same sort of that, that apron. I don't, I don't think I've ever seen six cars there.
Uh, this isn't a hotel, though, with a, a valet out front or a concierge service out front, no. You're self-parking, I mean, you're registering and self-parking. Okay, so that, that was one of the concerns. We, we talked a little bit and Claudia, I'd ask you to remind counsel maybe of some of the things that, that planning and zoning might have brought up, just so we have a, a little bit of discussion. I recall that on the, the bottom left-hand corner, it would be the northwest corner where the restaurant is, that we talked about that being a, kind of a significant intersection And that it does kind of extend almost to the very edge. Maybe you could talk about the, the thinking on how that relates to the, the street scape, you know, how that kind of activates the street? Because it seemed like it was a very strong corner that simply had a patio on one side, but it didn't really do much for the west side of the street. Talk about that. Am I on F1?
Okay, I'm just making sure that answered. Okay, so yeah, you're talking about that corner. So one of the things that we did specifically with this hotel building, with the F1 building, is we actually pulled it a little further away from the right-of-way than some of the other buildings. So if you think of B3, which is the one directly to the, to the west of this where Killwinds is, that, that, that building is, is quite a bit closer to the right-of-way than this one is. And the, there, there are a lot more steps as you go up the, oh, go up the road, as you go up Bridge Park Avenue. So there's, it's a very subtle transition. What we've done here is we actually reduced the number of steps in order to make the transitions just a little bit less subtle. And in that way, actually create some interesting, so you can see the, some of the green and the, the trees there between where the restaurant is and where the hotel is, that we can introduce a little bit more landscaping than we've, than we've had. But it also means that we can introduce larger, more impactful, both public and private spaces that are on our side of the right-of-way. So as an example, the, the F1 Hotel, you, you drop off at that drop-off point, but as the layout on the inside, there are doors on either side that's on access. So you could walk in, you could check in, and then you could immediately walk straight out onto Bridge Park Avenue. There's a, there's a main door there as well. And on that side would actually be the lounge space, the exterior lounge space for the hotel, which would, will include like a, a fire feature, is, is going to include a lot more lounge seating. So it's, it's something a little bit different. It's something that's a little bit softer than what we, what we currently have seen on Bridge Park Avenue. Again, just to, just to offer a little bit of variety, to make sure that that walk as you're continuing along Bridge Park Avenue continues to, to feel good.
How much space would you say you, you have from the, how much space did you leave that is increased in that right-of-way? So, so it's so hard for me to see these small little, like, it says D, E, C. These are all public spaces for sitting, is that correct? Or are they private?
Well, they would be, they would be private. Do we, some of those actually are public, aren't they? Or, yeah, yeah, we were thinking about integrating because there's enough space there, the hotel doesn't need all of it, the restaurant doesn't need all of it, that we could actually begin to mix public and private together. Though honestly, if it's successful, you shouldn't be able to tell the difference. I, I think that, that would be the ultimate goal.
Right. So the width on that, just to give us a sense of how far we are off Bridge Park Avenue, just, just the sense, the scale of, of that seating area. Do you have-
Exactly. 12 to 14 feet from the right-of-way?
Okay.
Okay. So 12 to 14 feet from the right-of-way. Now, obviously it changes a little bit as you run up and down the street.
Right.
But to, to give you some, I don't, I think that on the first block, so B and C Block, probably the most we've got is six to eight.
Okay. And planning and zoning, I know we made some suggestions on looking at this private area here as sort of like a window into, and I know I, I made this suggestion and I, I think some of the others talked about just enhancing that so that there's not just tree-lined green, but places that people, it's almost like a little oasis. It's because you have, you have the hotel rooms on F2 that people would sit out and look at, and then you've got the driveway and then you have the entrance to the hotel. And this corner right here, which is, I think D, is a little cafe patio, isn't it? Sort of like a little seating area. So you give any more thought to how you're going to utilize that space and, and, and improve the way it functions for those who are, you know, staying within that or walking through? I mean, we just felt it was a little narrow. I mean, I know parking and drop-off was one of the concerns.
I, I don't disagree with you that I think it does feel a little narrow. Again, it's like you don't want it to be too wide because we want, I want that to feel a little different than any of the, a lot of the other streetscapes that we have. And sometimes the coolest spaces can be narrower, taller spaces if they're done right. I think what it's going to mean is the attention to detail and the materials. So, and that's one of the reasons why you see a lot more green in there, is I think that there, there wants to be a lot more growies to, this is what we, we call it around the office, thinking of the, the space between C3 and C4 there behind Ram. I don't know if you've been back there lately, but it is so lush. And it's, and it's really quite, quite something. I mean, we will, I will park my car on the other side of the block just simply so I can walk through there. I mean, it's a nice walk and I think that is the ultimate effect that we want in there. And it may be even that the, you know, that the roadway materials want to be a little bit different through there. It's not, it should never feel like a throughway that needs to feel like its own experience.
Right.
That's really special to the uses that line it and not just a, a way to get to the B Block Garage faster.
You know, I think the, the concern is, you know, we were talking about, you know, does it meet the walkability standards or promote, promote the walkable and the space, and the treatment of the spaces? I think as these buildings start being next to each other and rising up, you know, to get like between F2 and F4, you've got this, this narrow green space and it's pretty passive green space, it's not very active. I think what I feel like is missing in these green spaces are these unique kind of pockets that you might put a guy with a guitar or, or, you know, a little, a little jazz player somewhere. But it isn't just a walkable little view that you would go through some steps, you may, you may sit down at a little table. But they have a, a more unique identity in that green space. It attracts a different kind of activity. And I think you have an opportunity here with that one, even though that's a drop-off point. Do you know what I'm saying? And I, I think, I think we were looking for a little more unique activity spaces, like even on the, the corner where you have the, of the restaurant at the far corner here. Everything has this sort of, it just sort of lines the perimeters instead of creating some little unique space. And that, and that's your opportunity in there. I think that's what we were talking about.
Yeah. And, and the one thing that we're missing here too, because we're looking at F and not G, but on the, right on the other side of the corner that we're talking about is a much larger space. It was actually really intended just for the sort of guitar purpose, that's Brent's guitar corner. He's always seen someone out there playing guitar. Now, we have that between Cap City and Fidault and we use it for that same, for that same function. It's not, it's not to say that we can't have one more, but we don't want to create 10 of those.
Right.
And the trick is going to be, as we take this through to final site development, is what are those different uses? How can we program these spaces? And one of the things we even did with D Block is there's a bocce ball court in, in the, the, between D1 and D2, I believe it is. And I'm, I'm super excited about that because it's different and it's unique and it's, and people will actually go there to use that in the same way that they go to, to PIMS and do the big jenga. I mean, there's lots of different ways, so that, that will be our challenge. But I think it's, I, I think we agree with you wholeheartedly that, and, and to support some of the uses that are there too, right?
Right. Now, and these, the sizes of this, of F1, is, is that pretty much the way it is? Is that, is there any movement on that at all? Like if you wanted to get deeper space in there or if you wanted to carve out a corner so that it's, I mean, are these set in stone, the sizes of these buildings here?
So the, the F1 building, largely yes.
Okay.
That is, that would be the one that, that is the fullest baked. I think Claudia alluded to that, that's the hotel. We, we kind of have to bake that one quicker simply because of the process that we go through with Marriott in order to get all of our approvals. And it's driven largely by the room sizes on the floors above. Now, the first floor does come out a little bit, especially on the back of the building. But there's, that one is probably the least flexible of what you see on this plan. The F4 building, I mean, it really, you, it could be a lot of different shapes. You know, we, we struggled in, in our office about, does it want to align with the F2 Garage or does it want to kick to align with Banker Drive? And it's sort of the same thing that we did with the A Block, you know, when we came forward with the A Block basic plan, we didn't really know what that office building wanted to be yet. And so we had a basic shape, but beyond that, you know, it, it came later. And that's, and that's what this will do and market is going to tell that, tell us that as much as anything.
Right. Well, I don't want to take up much more time, but Claudia, I just want you to remind us, there was a couple, some of the things that we have to think about is how the streets tie into the faces of some of the buildings. That was one of your concerns. Can you remind us of some of the things that planning was, you know, questioning and, and, because there, I don't see them all in the notes and minutes?
I think one of our main concerns and that is shown in one of the conditions that we outlined was that while this through movement from a vehicular standpoint and from a drop-off standpoint is really important, we also recognize that there will be a lot of crossing of that, of that drive, whether it's pedestrians that are going back to their car or it is people who are actually renting those rooms over on that side. So that was one of the things that we had spoken to the applicant about, working on that a little bit more to get it closer to what we have with the AC, which from us talking internally as a staff seems to work pretty well. And that's what we want to see here too. I think other than that, we had, on this particular block, I can't think of any of the other discussions that we had at Planning Commission.
Where would, so, you know, we've talked a lot about this grid network street. This private drive on the drop-off side of this hotel, what would be envisioned across Dale Drive from this intersection? It appears that this intersection is really close to Bridge Park Avenue. Do we have a measurement on that distance?
I probably do.
There is no, oh, there it is.
It's probably 120 feet, if that's not right?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Deliveries, where will deliveries come to for this hotel?
So I, I think that there's a couple spaces. So we've got the, the drop-off space there at the, at the entry. That is actually very close to the, the delivery, so the back of house spot as well. So you can time that so that the prime time when people are coming in and checking in is not the same time that deliveries are, are taking. There's another option to-
Like the UPS guy?
Hmm?
Like the UPS guy?
Yeah, he, they could, well, they could also, we could also sign some of the spaces there on Mooney Street. So just, just west there, so on the, on the other side of the restaurant space. So similar to what we've been talking about on, on Long Shore Street, where we've got all these parking spaces and we, we don't want to create all of these large loading zones that go mostly empty except for certain times of the day. The UPS guys are always there between 11 and, and 1:00. That we would mark those spaces specifically for the UPS guy, the FedEx guy, for any, for that, that loading function, so that we've, we've got the spaces when we need them, but then we don't have empty spaces when we don't.
Where's your trash?
So trash would be, would be in F2. So it is, it is, it's tucked in the corner of F2.
So all of the trash from this hotel is taken across the street and put in the parking garage? garage?
Correct. It's very similar to what is being done right now. So, like Cap City Diner.
Right, and it isn't working all that well. I, every time I'm there, and I'm there quite a bit, there's somebody parked in the street and there's someone trying to take things across and there's people trying to come and go. And I guess I, I would prefer that our situation be different than that, but I guess that's what the proposal is. Claudia, I would caution us to do, to presenting these F and G together. So, I'm going to read from the meeting minutes. This is how I got to my first question. Mr. Hunter stated the F4 office building will not be considered until the future. He explained the reason the applicant is requesting a waiver for a seven-story building is due to market forces. He reported there are 150,000, 200,000 square foot office users out there that want to be in Bridge Park and currently cannot be accommodated. So, that is not about building F4?
It is not.
It must be a typo.
And it is, it's potentially a typo in the minutes, but that is not what the plans or the analysis has shown.
So, that's why doing these two together make it really difficult to try to separate these things because the first thing I'm always going to read is the meeting minutes from our Planning and Zoning Commission. And it, it makes it really difficult to, when, when they're co-mingled together to try to separate out the two. So, I, I have concerns about delivery because we aren't providing, we, we need to have, does, I understand we don't want to put huge delivery zones in front of every building, but we have to put a delivery zone on every block. I don't see a delivery zone on this block. But, but I'm, I'm seeing such a small picture that I, maybe there, maybe there is one on an adjacent block, this direction of an adjacent block. I don't see that here. It isn't referenced in any of, any of the discussion points. We, we need to be sure every block has a delivery option that is reasonable for everything in proximity there so that we stop having the, all of the UPS, FedEx, Uber people, everyone stopping in the middle of the street and disrupting traffic. So, I, I want to make sure on this block that we have something that will do that. I, I think that this is a fairly large garage. I'm, I'm hesitant to say the numbers now because I'm not sure it's going to be the right garage in the, in the discussion from here. I think the two exit points are appropriate or perhaps you can have an entry that can be modified into an exit for event time. You know, there are a number of garages that will do that downtown, that they'll modify an entry point to be an exit point at certain times of the day and so they close off entry into that for that period of time. I'm not suggesting that you do that, I'm just saying I've seen that done and it's another way to solve that problem. For the F4, it's very difficult for me to approve a basic site plan when I don't know what the uses are because again, the way we handle all of these services are going to be important to how that piece of property is laid out. So, my last concern is with the finishes and unfortunately, the older I get, the more unfortunate I feel it is. I, I end up traveling a lot for work and the pictures here look like every residence-in kind of place that I go to everywhere across the country. And I was really hoping for something a little bit more special in, in this part of town because you're on Bridge Park Avenue. This is, this is the best street we've got in the district other than Riverside Drive itself. And to put the images like we see here on Bridge Park Avenue, I, I think is really doing it a disservice. The closest one would be this upper right-hand corner where there's some stone incorporated and there, there's, you know, different materials. Other than that, it's the, you know, it's the white panels and the off-color brick applied in a sundry of ways. And I, I think that Bridge Park Avenue deserves better than that. I would hope that they would be like, wow, that's a residence-in? That, that looks really nice. Not like, oh, that looks like the one that's around the corner from the grocery store in my town. So, those are my thoughts about F Block.
You showed us some different, I thought we had some different images at Planning and Zoning that were quite unique, that we talked about this very thing.
Well, I combined the two into one discussion. And we, and we actually did, we, we talked about how the, the G Block images were, were more appealing than the F Block images.
Right. But this would be the F Block.
This is, you're, we're only seeing the F Block.
Oh, okay.
It's really just the, the hotel.
Since, since you said that footprint is, is done, what, which of these are we talking about? Is these, are these just different angles of the same? No, there can't be. So, you said that the footprint is done, so what is the design going to look like?
I'm going to let my design architect here.
Great. Hi, I'm Chris Myers, Myers and Associates. For the planning purposes, Russ mentioned the Marriott process is pretty lengthy, so the, the plan that you see is pretty well developed. There's always room for adjustment based on your comments, but, and I'll also add to the, the photos you see here, I think what we did was we took combinations of some exterior finishes, but I think the G Block set of images also apply to what we're talking about here. So, the materiality and the uniqueness is certainly the direction we're headed and, and I think our development of the hotel in our presentation of the building design will reflect that.
So, if it's designed, can you not just show it to us? I mean, I guess I'm a little-
I won't have it tonight, but-
I'm confused by that. We have all of these different options, but if it's, the footprint is done, why aren't we looking at the, the one we're going to get?
The, the footprint is done, it doesn't mean that the building is designed yet. So, we've-
But the footprint would have a lot to do with what the exterior shaping of this is going to be, would it not?
Oh, absolutely. But these are all representative images. I, like, and I guess that's what Chris was alluding to is that, you know, the footprint, how the, the rooms layout and everything, we have to do that very, very early to get through our process, but we can still push and pull, we can still change massing, we absolutely can still change materiality. So, as an example, early discussions with Marriott, one of their notes on the drawings was no brick. Everything is supposed to be smooth-faced finishes. And, and I kind of chuckled and I said, this is Dublin, they're not going to let us do that, like, that we need more flexibility. So, you know, we're, we're in that process right now, but it's not to say we don't, we don't have a building designed, we can't show you an image like that yet. That's, and that's part of why we're here to get your feedback on what you like and what you don't like, to make sure that everything's in the right spot before we go that far.
Do you have a building then for F4?
No.
Okay.
But we don't have a design yet, no.
Okay. So, we were just discussing in the interest of time, what is it that we can do to, we, we have a lot left to do and it's 10 out of 10. So, I, I guess the question is to counsel, you know, I'm not comfortable passing this tonight with some of these unanswered questions about loading zones. You know, that is part of the basic site plan review and once we, once it leaves here, it's gone. And I think it has been, if past performance is a, is a, or if past behavior is indicator of future performance, this is going to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I'm not ready to sign off on those things and tie their hands to, to the things that they can and can't do. But we're, we're going to have to make some decisions with what we want to do with it. And I, I guess part of those questions were, would come to you too. Are there things that, that you'd like to show us that didn't make it into these documents in time that might be more helpful and, and answer the questions that we've asked? Or is that something that, that, you know, just you won't have to bring here?
Well, I, I mean, like I said earlier, I mean, I guess we really approached this at the, at a basic level. Lots and blocks, building types, you know, the, the eight, the F4 off, the F4 building is an office. We don't have a design for that building, but we have a, we have a use put down on the sheet of paper. Now, if that use were to change, we, we know that we would have to come back here. So, we are in front of you with, tonight with what we think as a basic plan is our best understanding of where the market is going to take us and how we can support it with the parking and the street networks and, and all of that. And it's not dissimilar from what we did with the A Block office building. And, and like I said, if any, we, we full well know, if anything changes, we come back to you. If it stays the same, then we could move forward.
Right. The difficulty in setting the lots and blocks is when you access points. So, if we set these lots and blocks and we want other entrances to the parking garage, we're, we're very limited because the access road's going to be on the side that is servicing the hotel rather than having, you know, some sort of service loop that comes in there that isn't interconnected. You're not going to be able to have roadway access on the other side of this parking garage between that and that office building because you already, you know, you don't want to break that, those blocks up too small. So, I, I guess I would say the lots and blocks are really fundamental to what we're doing here because it's access and layout and all of those things, more than uses. I mean, lots and blocks are far more than uses.
Right, right. And, and I think in, in terms of the, the street network and specifically the road between the, the garage and the office building, you know, that if we were to put a road between there, and believe me, there are probably sketches that show that as we've developed this, would mean that that was one building surrounded by four streets and, and, and really not in keeping with the way that we've developed Bridge Park and really starts to break up both potentially three if we had the entrances to the parking garage as well. So, it really starts to break that up. And so, that, that is why we arrived where we arrived at was, was what we thought was the best solution. Now, if, if you're not comfortable, for example, with, with the single exit out of the parking garage, I, we were just talking, there, there are ways that we could accommodate that. Maybe that is not a waiver that gets approved and, and we're fine with that. That, the, part of the reason why it's shown the way it's shown is because of the grade changes and the difficulty in making the ramps align, there's probably a way to get it done. And so, you know, those are the kinds of things that if, if there are waivers you don't want to approve, then by all means, I understand and we'll continue to work through the design.
Do we want to go through your waivers just to see where you're at? I mean, obviously that's what you came for.
Right.
So, I mean...
Is that going to get the job done here?
So, your waivers are-
Steve's still here, Dana.
Building type requirements, talks about the unlining of the, of the F2 parking garage that's across the street from another parking garage. So, it's unlined parking garage adjacent, across the street from unlined, unlined parking garage. The building type requirements, I, I don't think that, I've heard much issue about property line coverage requirements, the, the positioning of the building on the parcel. Is that correct? Think I can F1? Yes.
No, that's, no, I'm all right with that.
Of its coverage along Dale Drive. You have the build, another front property line coverage of 90%. Is it relative to the parking garage? I don't think that's probably a significant issue for anyone. Is that corner that isn't finished, is that where the dumpster is?
It is.
So, is that, so there'll be a curb cut there so that the trash truck can get in Height, ground story, I don't, I haven't heard that be problematic for anyone, the 20-foot versus 16. Building type requirements, parking structure, building type, parking location and loading. I, I would like to see, I don't mind one entrance into the parking structure, but I think you got to have two exits. That would, I believe, be a partial safety issue in the event that one of the arms breaks and doesn't come up and down or whatever, you're going to have people stuck in, in the parking garage. So, I don't know, we're probably half and half on the, on the waivers. The, the conditions, the building zone requirement, I haven't heard much concern about that. That's one and two. That the patio seating areas and the tree grates, we didn't even get to that 12-foot clear sidewalk width. You still were talking about a formal parking plan versus a, a counted parking plan?
Yes, there would be a formal-
An ad hoc sort of parking plan? This private drive between F1 and F2, F3 accommodating appropriate pedestrian circulation?
I think that one is, is also a concern, at least Planning and Zoning, is just the concern of mobility through that, both vehicular, connector, pedestrian, bike. It just seems like a tight space. It just does. I, I can't get around it and that's, to me, that's, that's an issue.
Particularly where that dumpster's going to be. I mean, on a hotel, you're probably going to have to have daily dumpster service with a, that has a restaurant in it as well, I would imagine. It's probably the, is it going to be the dumpster for other places as well or is this only going to be used for the hotel? Or is this going to be a centralized dumpster for?
It would be just for F Block.
So, everything on the block?
Yeah.
So, it's probably going to have daily at a minimum?
Most likely, although the difference between, say, like what's happening on C Block and this one is that this one really only has one restaurant. So, it's mostly office use or hotel use, which is just less. I, I don't know exactly what the schedule would be.
Okay. But I, I agree, Jane, that, that pedestrian experience, that would be part of that. And then the, any details regarding open space and site development standards? I think it would be difficult to commit to this open space until you have that building designed because once we set these lots and blocks, that green space has got to be exactly what it is and that may not line up with whatever building it is that you want to build on that F4 parcel. And then we'd have to go through this again.
Well, and I, and that was kind of what I alluded to earlier. I mean, if, we, we are fully aware that if the basic site plan changes, that we redo the basic site plan. This is, we're, we're trying to get out ahead and, and get the hotel, the hotel developed.
Sure.
With, but-
I think we want to help you with that.
Right.
I, I think that's kind of why we're struggling is, you know, we, we do want you to be able to get on your way with that. And that's why the question was posed to Claudia, can we do, you know, two of the parcels rather than the entire block?
Well, and I think too, what the applicant's saying is that, that, I don't want to oversimplify, but that's how I work. Designating that, that area of that block as a office building, they know they got to come back, you really want to market that office building to one user if you can. It could be multi-tenant, but I was assuming the comment that was made is you've got a lot of shoppers out there. So- That size of a building and it would, you want to make that building work for that potential tenant. So, you would want to try to bring that back and then integrate it later as opposed to say, this is how it's got to be now and it may not fit that tenant and now you're out the opportunity because they're, they're going to be really fickle about what building they're going to want to select.
That's, that's correct.
So, having a little bit of flexibility with that as you try to market is key. You know that's what you intend to do there. If you try, if you come back and say, I'm going to make that totally something else, that's a whole nother discussion too.
It's a whole nother discussion and, and it's another night that hopefully doesn't go this late, you know, but that, it is, it's, it's-
I mean, the good thing is it's got to come back to-
Yeah, right.
For, for more approval on that, so.
Yeah, I think really, you know, the design intent tonight is F1 and it looks like you didn't put a lot of effort in F2 and 3 and the, and the office building. I understand that because you really don't know what you're doing. But, you know, just something that I thought was interesting is just the green space across from the entryway into the hotel where you have the parking, you know, how well you develop that as, as a visual as you're coming out. And, and that's why I'm just looking at this thinking, hey, these guys are putting F1 together and they're trying to get it done. And I, and I understand what you're trying to do business-wise and I think that's smart because you haven't really developed the rest of the project. And I understand why you didn't develop the rest of the project because it's really not a, you're not interested, you got a potential client for the hotel and you're just trying to get that done.
Mm-hmm.
So, for us to run you all through all this might be a little bit unfair because you're not there yet. I mean, from a design standpoint, I can say it. So, I mean, we ought to probably try to vote on, get focused on F1 and if there's parts of it we don't really want or want to take care of and your issue, you know, with the parking garage having two exits, if that's possible is a good point. And then I suppose when you come back with the rest of this, the parking garage, it's, you know, you, you develop the rest of the landscape correctly and, and make it, you know, visual, somewhat visually appealing, these spaces. But this is- But this is pretty schematic.
It's basic, yeah. I mean, everything you said is correct.
Yeah. Well, it's what it is and what it is. So we shouldn't beat you up and drag you all through all this with, you know, what you're presenting, so. I think it's grossly unfair, but...
What do we do? Because we could just sit here. I don't feel a whole lot of consensus here, can be honest with you. How do we, what's the path out of these woods here? What do we do?
I think they want us to have us vote on the waivers and I think we should and let them know and, you know, Chris has said a lot of things about the parking garage coming up, gives them some idea how to develop that and...
You're talking just F1?
Yeah.
I hear some concerns that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily included in these waivers. You know, so even if we address the waivers, I don't know that we're addressing all of the concerns that are being... I mean, we can just call the questions, see what happens.
Well, the waivers address things in F1, F2, and F3, but not in F4, which is the building that we're struggling with because it's not been...
There's not much there. There's nothing there.
Right. So I don't know that the waivers necessarily address the concerns about building F4. So maybe there's a couple of different things there. Maybe we can step through the waivers, see where everyone's at with those.
Yeah.
And then take a look at doing what Chris suggested, which is taking a look at the first two.
Right. When you go through the waivers themselves, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of controversy with the exception of the last two that had to do with the parking structure and the entry locations, the entrance and exit lanes and all of that sort of stuff. With respect to these waivers, I don't know that there's, but I don't know that gets us...
From a staff perspective, I also would just remind you that we did, like as Mr. Hunter said, planning and zoning commission, well, the council approved the A block exactly like this with the A1 office building as a shell and then deferred everything to planning and zoning commission. So there were no waivers with the A1 office building at the council level. And planning and zoning commission approved the entire final site details for all three buildings without A1. And A1 came later by itself with the 26 or 32 waivers it had at that time at the planning commission level. But all three buildings in A block were approved at council and at planning commission exactly like what you see here tonight and that's why we brought it forward, just like that, I guess, from a staff perspective as well.
So you're saying that all of the concerns will be addressed at another time?
At that time, they were addressed at the planning commission level.
You mean, even the office building?
Not the, because there are no spaces for that on that A block, correct?
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that everything that had to do with A1, the office building, have a planning commission.
It seemed to me you walked through these waivers and I appreciate you walking down the list. I wasn't hearing anyone else chiming in, which I took that as consensus.
Right.
I think on that list, there was, I think there's the issue of the services and how those are going to be provided. And then I think on the next page under conditions, there was only one other item. And it seems like you could say, you know, you could accept the basic plan with the exception of XYZ, whatever that might be, and you could send that back with some guidance to planning and zoning commission and have them work those issues. I think that's consistent with what...
And I would want to add a...
Or maybe you don't, maybe you don't want the planning and zoning commission to work that for you. I mean, that would ultimately be up to you.
I would want to add a condition about services, that we handle trash and deliveries appropriately as one of the conditions if we were to go ahead and forward this through tonight. I think, for me, the two waivers that would be difficult to pass tonight would be the building types, entry location for parking with building the F2, so...
So that's the fifth, the fifth of six waivers.
And then the site development standards, parking structure, design entrance and exit lanes.
So the sixth. Five and six are problematic for you at least.
And then on, in terms of conditions, I would like to add a condition that there be some provision made for deliveries and trash removal that would be different than what we see here this evening. I think we can just send the message to, the seventh condition, that the F will continue to refine architectural details and building type requirements. You know, that we send the message that this building is on Bridge Park and we'd like the architecture to be appropriate for a building that would be on Bridge Park Avenue. I couldn't approve number six because of the final details regarding open space. It would be difficult to approve final details regarding open space when we don't have a building designed adjacent to it yet. That space is going to change. It may change for the better, it may change for the worse, we don't know, but it's going to change. The private access drive, I guess if that's the way that, you know, staff wants to see that happen in this. So I think probably six is a problematic and we need an eighth regarding services. Other than that, it's about building, required building zones and since these lots aren't square, I get why they require...
Is your concern with six more F4 than one and two?
Yes.
Okay. So that the applicant provide final details regarding open space and site development standards with the site plan review?
Greg, I think, I'm not sure we've covered Jane's concern about the...
Yeah, I still have a concern about the, about the space in between because planning and zoning brought this up, the concern about the mobility, the usefulness of being able to get in and out of there with, because one of the things I noticed very quick...
The space in between, in what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, between F, I don't have them in front of me again. Could you put the, yeah, F1 and 2, the parking garage? This is going to be a very busy place. And the concern with planning and zoning is you stack six cars and there's more than six cars. And then people are walking from there all the way down to go into the parking garage. So they're going to be walking back and forth. They're going to park their car, they're going to come back out, they're going to walk over. You have people dropping off taxis, Ubering. There's just a lot of activity there and it just felt as if it just didn't provide enough space. That was my problem.
And we agree. I think we even talked about that at planning and zoning. We didn't change it for this. I didn't want to feel like we were baiting and switching, but we hear you and we agree with that.
I think that has to be a condition that that's addressed, I guess.
So you want to craft a condition that you think might speak to?
Well, I'm going to let legal craft that condition because I don't know how to do that. But, yeah, that is a condition for me is that we need to address the usability of that space on that access drive.
And would like, one of those things I'm trying to just make sure I understand, would it be like a mid-block crossing kind of crosswalk? Are you worried about, where will people, what we don't see on this is how people enter and exit on foot the parking garage to the hotel.
Just in general, it needs to be, to my satisfaction, it needs to be clearer how if there's on-street parking, whether or not there's space for pedestrians, whether or not bicycles can go there, whether you can drop off, whether Ubers can, is it all going to back up? Is it just going to become a, just a mobility mess? That's, that's it.
Councilmember Fox, to make sure that we're understanding what you're asking for, would that be an additional condition of approval of the basic plan for them to come to P&amp;Z or whoever council decides is the reviewing body?
Right.
Present those plans, but not necessarily that we're going to solve them here.
No, not at all. No. I just want it to be something that you're looking at and you say you are and I just want to make sure it gets addressed and looked at at planning and zoning.
Okay, so how do you define the issue, Jane? Do the best you can?
That the access drive is studied more further with planning and planning and zoning as to its ability to handle multi modes of transportation, whether that's walking, biking, Uber, taxi, that it's, that's, yeah. So there's, it is not become, it doesn't become just a clog.
So would it be fair to say you'd like it to refine the functionality of the space between F1 and F2?
For the purpose of good, multi-mobile transit, I guess, transportation. It's, I can just see where it's going to be a very active space.
So if I add multimodal after pedestrian, then that addresses this? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Claudia.
Say that again, Claudia.
I guess, our condition says to work with...
It's more than pedestrian.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's more than pedestrian. Because if we get a little connector and you're dropping off with a small van or a bus or whatever, I can just, if your neighborhood works the way you hope it does, you know, you want to be able to provide for it. That's what I'm, so, yeah. It's bike, it's biking, Uber, it's all of those.
Would it be fair, well, it's not pedestrian movement.
No, it's more than pedestrian movement because pedestrian, you're going to be fine.
What's now the other issue?
If it's only six cars and people.
Multi, what do you call that? We got to call it something.
I added in other types of mobility options.
I would be specific to say automobiles, right?
Transit, yeah, transit too. I think you have to think about, you know, what do they call an Uber now and Lyft? What do they call that?
Ride sharing.
Ride sharing.
Why don't we just call it transportation issue?
I like that. I don't care.
Transportation issues include pedestrian, includes cars, bikes, all that stuff.
Right.
I just have one question. I've been wondering all in the evening and, okay, so the way this works is sort of like your other parking garage. You actually go into E into the hotel and then you walk down the street and go in at Mooney Street, but you don't have any access and maybe because you haven't got this far in the design. The green space that's situated across the entry into the hotel, there is no access for crossing from the entry into the parking area or there will be or won't be or you don't want that or you want them to walk down the street and then go up into Mooney Street?
It's on the northeast corner, so it is actually, it may not be showing on that.
Okay, so you walk up, you walk up and go into, okay.
Yeah, it's basically that corner of that liner building.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious. I just thought, you know, if I was in that hotel, I'd probably walk across the street and walk into the garage, but instead of walking north or south or, I guess I'd be east or west, but whatever. But I was just curious about that detail. I didn't understand it. Okay. Where do we get something on the floor here?
All right. Where we're at now is we have four conditions that I think, or I'm sorry, excuse me, four waivers that seem as though my instinct is telling me would pass, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And then if we added under the conditions, condition number eight, provide for provisions for deliveries and/or trash removal, and number nine, refine functionality of the space between F1 and F2 to address transportation issues.
So I actually added that to number five because I already had a condition.
Okay, fair enough.
I made, I'm sorry, I made it bold so that you can see it.
Okay.
So you're saying remove waivers 5 and 6, right?
Well, you would ultimately, exactly.
And is it, it is appropriate for, to the satisfaction of planning and engineering or is that something that's planning and zoning's purview or it will be anyway on the condition?
It depends on your third motion tonight.
I'm sorry.
It depends upon council's selection of the reviewing body for...
Do we want to send them for them to address these parking entry and exit issues? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So instead of approving the waiver, we're going to have them address the issues that are raised in waivers 5 and 6? Okay.
How are we doing that?
They'll have to resolve...
They'll have to resolve, we're not just granting a waiver, they're going to have to resolve how they're going to address those issues.
Well, it seems from a process standpoint, since you asked for the waiver and the waivers are coming to you with a recommendation from ART that they be approved, that really you ought to disapprove them if you're not okay with them.
Yeah, okay, sorry. We would disapprove 5 and 6.
Okay. And the language there, Claudia, on the conditions, did you add number eight and then you put number nine into number five? Is that what we did here?
Yes, yes, indeed.
Okay. Does that get the job done? Did you want to say something, Chris, about the green space and building F4? I think that was part of number 6.
They're going to have to come back. They're, I mean, it...
All right. We'll provide final details, so, all right, well, the issue's been identified. Okay, so then I would make a motion that we approve waivers 1, 2, 3, and 4 as they're listed in the, on our agenda, on the staff report and on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Let's do these two groups at a time. Ann, could you call?
Mr. Keenan, Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And then I make a motion that we approve the basic plan with the eight conditions, number five as amended by Claudia on the fly over there, and adding condition number eight with respect to deliveries and trash removal.
I'll second. And did you want to take four out of it, F4?
No.
Out of your approval of the basic plan? You're keeping it, okay.
Oh, the building. No, just leave it and deal with it later. Yeah. Ann.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
You know what, I'm also going to make a motion disapproving waivers 5 and 6 just to make sure that the record is clear. Is there a second to disapprove those two waivers?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And then I make a motion that we refer this matter for future development plan review to the planning and zoning commission.
I'll second that.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, since that went so smoothly, let's go to the basic plan.
We'll start all over again.
Bridge Park Block G.
Okay.
So moving to G, which is just north of F block, and this is actually one that you had seen previously, but there were changes made significantly to the point where it was appropriate to bring this back for a second basic plan review. And the applicant is requesting essentially three, three buildings on the block, which is the tall office building there on the south side, which is the one that is asking for a waiver to the story height, and then a parking garage that is lined with residential and then a residential building with open space in the center. Here are a couple of massing drawings, again, G1 being the office building that is permitted to be six stories tall and the applicant is requesting a waiver for a seventh story. And then here how they would look along the street facing elevations. And then the building behind the parking garage and the residential building. And here are some of the character images that we talked about earlier that were provided, again, more residential in nature for this particular block, especially for the northernmost And then for the office building, some modern glass structures, some warehouse images as In a similar spot here, there is private open space and public open space. There is an open space similar to what is currently in existence in the other blocks. And then some more detailed drawings of what shapes these blocks could take and then details for furnishings or things like that would happen at the final site plan review. Quickly for the waivers, again, we have frontline property coverage requests for waivers. There is a entrance to the parking garage here on Dale Drive, which has been accepted by engineering with some additional details to forthcoming here in the final site plan. And then similar, there is some open space actually that's created up there at that corner, so there is also a request for frontline property coverage again. And then the uses within that building on the ground floor, request for a waiver. And then lastly, like I said, the height of the, the height of the office building with that extra story. So ART has recommended approval of all of these at their early October meeting. And then the application comes to you with seven conditions as outlined in your staff report. And again, you have to determine a required reviewing body for future applications.
Okay, let's see. Does any, council have any questions regarding the four waivers? Taking this one chunk at a time.
I would like the applicant to know that I am not opposed to a tall building there, a taller building. However, I don't know that we want to waiver that at the point where we have no idea what the theme of the building is going to be, what it's, you know, we know that it'd be an office building, but we have no idea of what it's going to look like. You could do maybe even taller building that was really good-looking or a building that's shorter that isn't, is really not good-looking. It's difficult for me to provide that waiver and give the height away having no idea of even an architectural style that's being pursued. You know, that's kind of our zoning ground zero is, you know.
Chris, do you have any response to the proposed question?
So this, this is the building that you alluded to earlier. It must have been a typo. This is the one where, so now, right now currently, we have 100% leased on all of our office space. And we're starting to get larger tenants that are out there that are, that are actively looking at, at Bridge Park in particular. They tend to be the 150,000, 180,000 square feet. We've actually, I think, two or three within the last couple of months that have been looking. So those are big buildings that you really can't get to without height. Now, having said that, you, we wouldn't build a 180,000 square foot office building on spec. So that, that tenant really needs to be there in order for us to be able to land them. And, and so that's really why we're here asking for this. Now, we could ask for this waiver later. The only reason why we're asking for it now is that it helps in the conversations that we're having with those tenants. I, I can think of one in particular that would be a, a new office tenant for the Dublin community that asked for between 150 and 200,000 square foot, and the schedules align. But they need some certainty that, you know, we can't get six months down the road and then just simply not know, and it just takes time to develop these buildings. So that's, that's why we've asked for this one now here in particular. One thing I wanted to mention really fast is, thinking about Bridge Park Avenue, this building in particular, why we've, we're, we're using Myers and Associates to help us with the planning of the block. They're doing the residential building, the hotel building, the garages. G1, this office building, will be handled by a different architect to make sure that we continue to see some different, some varieties, some architectural variety, variety in the details. If somebody else is drawing it, it's going to look a little bit different, and we think that that's important. So that's one other thing I wanted to make sure you knew, is that this will have a different architect.
So it sounds like you and Chris might be saying the same thing. And I know this council, if you came in with a tenant that was gonna occupy the entire building, 200,000 square feet, and they needed eight floors, we may just say, well, that's something we're fine with, given what it is you're gonna be able to do. Can we wait, so it's six stories now is the limit? Can we just waive the six stories and you let us know what that is afterwards? Whether it's seven or eight or whatever? I mean, why would we box ourselves?
I mean, yeah, it's, however we want to say the condition, it's, you know, if you felt comfortable with that amount of height, that amount of density, provided that it's supported with the infrastructure and provided that you feel comfortable with whomever the governing, governing body is to approve that building at final site plan?
Could we tie together the conditional use of that with the architecture? So that, could a condition be, rather than a waiver, could we give them a condition that additional stories are permissible, given they meet the architectural standards? Or something along those lines?
It requires a waiver. It is just a code that's not met.
Because when we, when we vote on this and we settle on these lots and blocks, you're kind of tied into this footprint because you're already tied into the footprints of the other two buildings that you're more prepared to move forward with. It, it just gets to be difficult. You know, you, they may want a larger footprint on the first floor, and they may want some terraces, or they, you know, in order to get that amount of square footage, you might need a bigger footprint, even if you have seven or eight stories, depending on how they want to lay out the building. And when you leave here, that sets this.
You're correct. It sets this, and this is based on what we see right now out in the market, what we're experiencing right now. Same thing kind of applies, as I said before. If the plan has to change significantly in a way that can't be approved through the final site plan, then we come back and we see you again. And it's, and it's, it's sort of a calculated risk. We have, we have to make certain judgments so that we can move forward, knowing that the markets change.
Claudia, at what point do we accept their green space as the actual green space? So if this green space were to go away, then where do we come back? Because we haven't conditioned fee and lieu on any of these things. How do, how do we recapture that if some of this green space goes away?
Again, you would, with your motion on who is the required reviewing body, that body would make all of those decisions because there is no requirement in the code that certain waivers have to be approved at certain stages or development or by certain reviewing bodies. So you could deny the waiver for the height, for example. The planning commission would read your minutes and understand your concerns about architectural quality, and when they're faced with that waiver, hopefully would take that into consideration. Same with open spaces, as we're getting to having, some of the open spaces are dependent on the number of units and the number of bedrooms within units. So at this point, we wouldn't have those numbers, but it would happen at that point.
Because those green space calculations are in the staff report.
For what we have right now.
Based on these layouts.
Right.
So really, I don't, you know, I can see what you're doing. You're shopping for clients, and office park could be real good for us because of the tax base. So I don't see why we might not, and I understand what you're trying to say. You're trying to hook it to a good piece of architecture that really looks great.
That's how we've always done.
Yeah, I know, but.
Giving more density away.
And Claudia says it's probably something we can't be doing, right? According to the rules, according to the way the thing's written. So, but I, you know, I still think we're here trying to help you. You're, you've been a good partner. And as Chris said, if you want to change the footprint, and also the parking garage shrinks, and the building has to get bigger, or the parking garage has to get larger because it's shrinking, you know, we want to be here to help you. We're not trying to, you know, block this thing, so.
And, and I guess, just to, to, to put a point on that too, when we looked at this and we were trying to figure out what is this, what are the things that we want to get your feedback on right now? The builder getting, building getting wider, to us seemed like, okay, that's doable. I mean, if we came to them and said, it's a six-story building, but it's this wide instead of this wide. But if we came back and said, no, we want eight stories instead of six, that seemed like to us the harder carry. So that's why we asked for that one now, is to make sure that we understood, as we were out there in the market.
Right.
What our parameters were. Yeah.
So, I mean, we're trying to help you out, I think. It's, we are concerned about the architecture. I mean.
I think we're far more concerned about the architecture than we are about the height.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would, I don't mean to disagree, but I would not agree with what you just said. I, I think getting higher isn't necessarily the problem for the right building and the right tenant.
On Bridge Park Avenue, you know.
On Bridge Park.
And I think green space is really important here too, because I think one of the things that, you know, once it's built and it's in context, you, you see things differently, of course, that I think, I think we need more green space in and around. I just, the congregation spaces are gonna become more and more important. So I, I would be, I would also be more concerned about taking away green space than the height. And I think we have to, yeah, we have to be clear that we're gonna create that.
If this block consisted of some really great green space, a parking garage and an eight-story office building that had nice plazas around it?
How about a park on top of the parking garage?
What's that?
How about a park on top of the parking garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning talked about that.
Maybe it's attached to the building, and that's where the plaza is.
So where are we, where are we on these four waivers? Are we, do we agree on these, or do we have a problem with one of these waivers?
I mean, I'd be okay with.
This thing's so abstract, and I think they're coming in here. I mean, they're fishing for clients and trying to build a relationship, and I don't, and they don't want their hands tied, I understand that, and I think personally.
I think this ties their hands more than what we want.
They'll be back if they get a different deal. This building either start growing towards the parking garage, and maybe the height will come down, and architecturally that'll be more attractive.
Well, we could pass these waivers, right? And if you guys come back, now you've heard this feedback, and you come back and say, hey, we need eight stories.
Absolutely, because at, at the end of the day, if we, if somebody comes to us and says, we want 250,000 square feet, that's absolutely worth coming back and talking to you about if it doesn't fit within these parameters.
This is a preliminary sales meeting rather than an architecture meeting. It really is.
Well, in the site plan, we don't want parking garage exits emptying off on Dale Drive. That, that's gonna be problematic. You know, I, we've already heard from engineering that that's not what they want.
No, yeah, what I said is that it requires engineering approval, but in our reviews, it seems approvable.
I cannot imagine that we would want, Dale Drive's gonna be our, our next major north-south connector, next to Riverside Drive. I, that would be, I, that would be surprising to me. The Mooney Street makes much more sense to come and go on Mooney Street than it does on Dale Drive. That's the kind, that, Mooney Street is built for that kind of purpose. Dale Drive is not.
So do we, back to my waiver question, do we want to add or change or modify or adjust or anything with these waivers?
I think we're, I think we can't do the architectural change. We'd like to, but we can't. So I think we're gonna move on with this and approve the waivers, and you guys will be back. We'll see you next time. And at that time, we want to see your architecture, if you want to bring it in here.
I wouldn't support the seven, the first condition of a curb cut, the curb cut on Dale Drive. I would rather see that those practices happen on Mooney Street.
Can I just, real quick, on Dale Drive, I, I was gonna jump in a second ago. I thought, and I may be wrong, the character of Dale Drive starts to change at some point. Dale Drive is a relatively temporary treatment, the way it's constructed. Is that, is that true or not? I mean, that's just my recollection. So I just would, just want you to know, and you may not be doing this, but if you were looking at Dale Drive in its current condition and state, that was not, as I recall, the intention of that road to stay looking like that for the long.
What will it look like, then?
It would look more like the other, the other roadways, I thought.
I think it would look more like Bridge Park Avenue than it would Mooney Street, correct?
Which is dangerous.
It would look more like Bridge Park Avenue than it would Mooney Street. That was my, my understanding from way back when of what Dale Drive was gonna look like.
Which, which I think is why engineering is saying that could be a potential, it could connect there because if that character of that road does change, which was its intent, then you would allow entrance and exit off there. That's, that's all I'm saying.
We've been trying to keep curb cuts off of Bridge Park Avenue and put them on the arterial streets rather than right on Bridge Park. And that's why I, that's the only reason I say that.
I understand. I'm just trying to recollect that treatment.
So I, I guess I would have a problem with the first condition.
Would that create a, a situation then where, then you have an issue with having two exits, though? So that's the problem with it.
Yeah, they're gonna, it's gonna have to lay out different. I, I don't see how they're gonna lay it out like this, but there's lots of ways they could do it.
You have an entrance on the west side, G2, the parking. You have an entrance there on the west side, and you have also one on the, on Dale Drive, right? For the parking? You have two.
On G, yes.
Right, and we just talked about, where else would you put it?
And, and I, I don't know. I mean, honestly, I thought that's what we were talking about on F block, as well as that.
Right, you want two entrance, you want to be able to get out in two ways. We did, planning and zoning did discuss a little bit on Mooney Street that, so that it didn't just look like a parking entrance, that you would do some interesting architectural features to kind of give a peek into that inside green space that's private for the residential building, that there's something creative there. I mean, I think that if you, there's nowhere else to put it. There's only two sides of that building available for pulling in. I don't know where you would ask him to put it.
Well, once they have it designed, they can ask for a condition, or they can ask for a waiver from the reviewing body, once they, you know, if they really feel like the design is nailed down and there is no other way to do that, then the reviewing body has the ability to do that waiver. If we do that waiver now, that's how it's gonna be designed out the gate. I think what the message I'd like to send is, design it differently so that it's effective without needing that. And if you can't do it, then that, that reviewing body could give you, give you the waiver if there's no other way out. But this isn't much of a design. It, it's so conceptual that I don't want to give a waiver when we haven't even tried yet.
It is a condition, though. It's not a request.
So, condition number one, we're, all right, let's put that on the shelf for a second. What about two through seven?
I don't have a problem with the rest of them.
No.
All right, so can we renumber these, Claudia?
Yeah.
Two becomes one, and then down to six?
Yeah.
And we scratch out number one. And then with that, is that?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Cool.
So then we can deal with the waivers first. I guess I make a motion that we approve the four waivers?
Last second.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
And I make a motion that we approve the six conditions, beginning with condition number two now being number one, through condition number seven being number six.
I will second.
Ann.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Fox? Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. And I make a motion that we require the reviewing body to be the planning and zoning commissioner for future approval.
Awesome.
Second.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Okay.
Adios.
Daft comments. Dana?
Just, I only have one item tonight, one thing. That is, I want to introduce Brad Fugrell. Brad, if you would stand up. Brad is our new director of building standards. He has joined us in the last week or so, and Brad is an Ohio guy originally. Spent some time with the Department of Transportation, City of Lancaster, then went to California for a while, and is returning back to Ohio. Structural engineer by, by training, but sort of a jack-of-all-trades, and got into chief building official work with that kind of a background. And we really welcome his expertise and experience in, in the world of chief building officials and building standards and, and code and so forth, enforcement of building code. So just wanted to introduce Brad and welcome aboard. That's, that's all I.
Welcome aboard, Brad. Great to have you.
That's all I have.
That's it, Dana?
And Brad, this is an early meeting, by the way. Normally, later, so.
Yeah, this is one of our short meetings, Brad, so.
Welcome to Dublin.
Don't know what to tell you there. Committee reports. Public Services Committee, Michelle, are you with Christina? Giving us a report about aging in place?
I'm gonna let Michelle kind of take over.
Losing your voice.
I think she's lost it. I can barely hear a whisper down there now.
Do, do, Michelle, do you, do you want to do this next time, even the late hour?
If that's council's preference, that's fine.
You want to do it next time?
No, I'm, I'm okay if we wait another couple of weeks to do this.
Okay, we'll wait till the next.
Is there anything time-sensitive in it?
No, we do not. We were bringing something forward as part of the budget, so we can, we can wait until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll postpone that report till the next meeting. Thank you. It is a late hour. P and Z, Jane? We've heard a lot about what you've been up to for the last two weeks. Admin, Chris?
I would just, sorry, I mean, I'm gonna say something. As, as the admin committee, we had, we held our retreat, and we had objectives from it. And I think if tonight teaches us nothing else, is that we've got to get moving on this review body, code amendment kind of things, because this is not the place, this is not the setting to do planning and zoning work. And we all got frustrated because we were doing planning and zoning work, but we took the job to do that work. So we either need to embrace it and love it, or we need to figure out how to send that back to being planning and zoning commission work. It was, the review process that I talked about is in our goal-setting, and here it is. We are however many months later, we're, what, eight, seven, eight months later,
is, we are however many months later, we're, what, eight, seven, eight months later, and we're no closer to having this problem fixed than when we set out. So, that's my admin chair pedestal, and I'll get off it.
Okay. Community Development, John?
Yeah, we, I was thinking, we probably might want to just waive the next, delete the flag item, just, just for the sake of brevity, because we don't need anything else right now, another thing, and just maybe move that to the November 9th, or whenever it was, the 19th, to the fourth city council meeting, just have a general vote on it, so we don't have another meeting.
But we have those, we have those facade program things to review anyhow.
Yeah, and, and another thing, I would like you guys to do this, I mean, if, if we're going to get into this, I would like the membership, the city council, to spend a little time reviewing something about flags, and read the book, Good Flags, Bad Flags, or get into the internet and see the 10 things that make up a good design. So if we're going to vote for this as a committee in the whole, and that's how it's going to end up anyway, that we actually know something about what we're talking about, and it's not an emotional issue, or somebody's saying, well, I like this or that, but you actually know what the criteria is for a good flag for a community, and there are specific criteria, and it's important, so everybody kick in a little bit of time, and, and I'd appreciate it, when we come to this decision, and make a good decision for the common good of the town. That's, all right?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Can you send, or maybe send something around, or a suggestion of the reading?
Yeah, there's, and actually, on the internet, if you just type in quality flag design, you'll soon be lost, as I was, in 20 hours of discussing all the international flags of the world, why they're crappy, or why they're good, all the state flags, their rating, why they're good, why they're bad, with colored pictures, and there's also a book, it's called Good Flag, Bad Flag, lays out five to seven principles on what a flag should be if it's representing your community. So, I mean, this shouldn't be just an emotional issue, it has, should have some kind of intellectual backdrop to it by ourselves.
Great, go ahead. Finance, Mike?
I, I guess I've been a little out of touch here, but from what I gather now, there's an, the meeting that we scheduled last year, in December of 2017, for 6:30 on November 7th, and again at 6:30 on November 14th. The 14th meeting is still at 6:30?
I think I moved that to 6, just to give an earlier start that night, on the 14th. The November 7th one will be used for that committee workshop. Correct, somebody has a list up there.
I mean, who, it's a council of the whole, and it's going to be at 8:00 in the morning?
No, that is Community Services Committee, is it not? No, Community Development Committee on the 7th. I don't have that scheduled.
Can we send around the final?
There's a list up there.
Community Services Committee in the morning on November the 7th.
So we are not meeting on the 7th at 6:30?
5:30, um, I don't have it in front of me.
Is that right?
I don't know, I'll have to call you in.
We'll circulate a final.
Would you like me to walk through, so, beginning?
You can send it out tomorrow.
Send it out tomorrow.
We'll put our heads together and figure out what's what, because I really don't know.
All right, we'll circulate the final committee lineup.
All right, that's all.
Public Services, Christina?
Well, we just postponed it till the next time.
Central Ohio Transit Authority, Kathy?
Nothing.
Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
Uh, nothing.
Friendship Associations, Christina?
Nothing.
And on that item, I did go meet with the three past Columbus mayors regarding friendship cities, and it was a very interesting launch, it was held at the State House, and I think Christina's doing a lovely job, taking us in the right direction with those folks.
Great. Morpsy, Chris?
Well, JM is here tonight, and he's brought some hardware with him, so why don't you guys come up? Nick, you can come, too. So, they, at our last meeting, they won a terrific award for the sustainable work they done, and we received pla, well, why don't you tell us what you did?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for having us, and in terms of time, we'll make it very brief. Sustainable 2050 is the new program from Morpsy that allows cities to compete based on their sustainability record. So we submitted our application, and met the platinum level, which is the highest level possible, and we're part of the inaugural class of Sustainable 2050 communities, along with four other communities in our region. So it's a huge honor, and we're happy to be representing the city.
Fantastic, congratulations.
They worked really hard on it, and they made a, a nice presentation to them at our last Morpsy meeting, and gave them the award and the plaque and all those things, so, great job, guys.
Fantastic, thanks, congratulations. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing, thank you.
U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor, Kathy. And Jane?
Yeah, go ahead.
It was a great meeting. The, the group has had a discussion about the overlay, made some, made some decisions to, to move forward with it. The overlay for the 33 corridor will create some, some boundaries where architectural guidelines, the way the buildings face the street, the aesthetics of the road, including industrial Parkway, are all being considered, and from my sense in the room, there was pretty much overall agreement that they would, they would move forward with the plans. Dana, you could probably add a little bit to that.
No, nothing to add on that.
Oh, that's right.
There, no, that's right.
Yeah, the, the only comment that I made is, I think now, one of the conversations was to share this a bit more now with each of the individual communities. So Jerome Township will be sharing this with their community in November, the 11th, I think it is, um, yes, the, that, November 11th, and I think at some point, Dublin as well, but I, I think, to Jane's point, there was shared enthusiasm for the plan, as it was presented, and now really taking it out to the different communities to, to get their thoughts and, and support for that. So I, I think a good step forward, so, thank you.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Just thank you for coming out and supporting the, the festival. Unfortunately, it was a rather cold and rainy night, so, but they really put a lot of effort into it, I got to hand it to it, and the, the thing that the monks built, their prayer area, was just really awesome.
And then they just put it on the street?
It was amazing, they took brushes, after they tapped each little grain of sand in place, they took brushes, and I was watching them, they sort of did this kind of thing, and it sort of resembled cosmos swirling together, because of the way they obliterated their piece of art, and you know, and the idea is that no matter how beautiful things are in life, that everything's passing.
It's all temporary.
And you go back, and it's a temporary thing, so, and that's why they obliterated their art. So, it's all very interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Kristina?
We meet this week.
Washington Township, my liaisons didn't even, not even here, we have nothing to report on that regard, so, roundtable. Jane?
I've attended many events, and I'm really sad that none of you were dressed up, except myself, for the Spooktacular, as the Cat in the Hat, but I had a great time, and I have to do a shout-out, just to the, our event staff, oh my God, we have the best event staff, there must have been 4,000 people there at the Spooktacular, and when you add that to the work they do on the Fourth of July, and the Irish Festival, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade, they not only pull off a great event, but what they do is they build community around here, they make social connections work, the diversity of the people that come to our events is amazing, and they're building memories that I don't think any other neighborhood, or any other suburb could possibly hold a candle to, so I have to, want to make sure that they hear that. Went to the neighborhood leadership meeting, that was great, spent a little time with the Historic Design Guideline Group, and they came up with some wonderful suggestions, and planning did a great job in passing around some information, and I think we'll come back with some good things. So, the only other thing that I want to say is, as I'm going to these different meetings, what I'm finding, and what I think is really encouraging, is that we are really, with community engagement, connecting people together, the dots are starting to connect. Historic Design Guidelines Group is interested, because they heard a little bit about aging in place, and aging in place is working with Centero, and Centero is at places like the Bread Festival, and Dublin Bridges is connecting with, with so many people, so I think what, what we're getting really, really strong at, and maybe we always have been, but I'm noticing it more, is that the cooperative work between businesses, the city, the schools, the, the charities, the social organizations, makes this fiber of this community so very strong, and we, we just need to continue to support that, so, thank you.
Jane, Kathy?
And I have to say, I have a picture of Jane as Cat in the Hat, so that's.
Please circulate.
I will, that is, that is worth the price of admission right there, just to see that. So I agree, it was, it was a spectacular, Spooktacular, and I have to say, you know, the, the, the rock stars were, we were, as you know, with the police and fire group, and the, the, the police officers that are in the schools were the rock stars. The kids were so excited to see them, they were just, they were great, so that was really, really wonderful to see. They wanted their picture taken with it, it was great, it was wonderful, so, congratulations to the staff, that was a wonderful event. I would like to maybe make a request and, and say thank you, I know that there was a lot of work and a lot of back and forth on the CIP analysis that, you know, that, more than one meeting, shall we say, so I want to thank the staff for working on that. My request would be, is that as we move forward, if we could add to our quarterly financial update, not our monthly one, that, that's too much, but a quarterly financial update, just where we are with those particular projects that we've, that, that we have incorporated in that CIP. So, each of those projects that we agreed, it would be wonderful to know where we are against that, where we are against plan.
We provide a monthly CIP, monthly, CIP, design, construction, and at times, all the CIP.
Yeah, I know there's word, but I'm talking about individual line items, because I know when we, when we were going through the CIP this year, we asked, what did we actually spend against these particular projects in the CIP in the, in the prior year, and we were able to do that for a few of them, but not for all of them. So, I'm, I'm asking that on a quarterly basis, we just create that as a running activity, so that when the end of the year comes, and we're doing our CIPs in the future, we have that data.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
So it isn't just the major projects, you know what I'm talking about? I'm talking about the.
We'll, we'll take a stab at that and run it some format.
That would be wonderful, because then I think, then, then I think we know where we are against those, and, and how we're tracking, and I, I think that would be very useful, so thank you very much.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say, I had the opportunity to go to Washington, DC, and sometimes we have residents that just do fantastic things, they're acknowledged on a national or international level, so I had the opportunity to go with three Dublin people that were such acknowledged. Charles Musvid, who, he founded a inner-city clinic that's not funded by the government, it's all funded by private money, and of course, this idea is now spreading across the country and into Canada, so he was honored, he was given an award. Geraldine Dixon, another Dublin resident, was, actually received a knighthood, and it was an older knighthood, she was made a lady, it was 300 years even before the Order of the Garter, of the bath, so it was a really prestigious thing. And Dr. Miley, who moved up his clinic to our area, to our hospital, and we really wanted a bunch of medical practices up here, and he moved his entire surgical team up here to Dublin, he was also so honored, because both these people swore an oath that they were going to spend the rest of their lives with the poorest of the poor and the sick of the sick, and had spent a number of years doing charity work, it was just amazing lifestyle, so they were honored, and it was a beautiful white-tie dinner at the Congressional Library, so I want to say, congratulations to those three people from Dublin. And then, the custom home builder paper and the residential standards, since we have a new standards gentleman out there, just join us, I was just thinking, as I read through it, you know, we may want to start reconsidering having vinyl on our houses, and maybe move to stucco and brick and other materials. And the other custom homes builder, when we, when that was proposed nine months ago, it was really, how do we draw in higher-end housing than the standard? We've had a lot of tract developers, and we've lost, and other communities are picking up these million-dollar, two-million-dollar, five-million-dollar houses, which we're soon going to see on a tour, and we don't really see those coming into our community anymore, and those kind of people are CEOs, and they, they, they generally don't drive, so they lease our buildings, and so we're losing some of that, and we like to attract a certain amount of those peoples, those persons into our community, because with them, they bring their corporations, and they do lease our buildings, so, you know, that's really what that was about. I didn't really, reading both papers didn't feel like it was getting a lot out of that in that direction, and I see a lot of those, those personages who have that kind of economic power, moving to other cities and not coming here anymore. And it's maybe our fault, because we didn't take the opportunity to create those kind of subdivisions, and I don't know if it's too late in the game, or if we have enough land left to do that, but they are the kind of people that build equity and tax base in our community, so, thank you.
Thanks, John. Michael? Christina?
The, I was asked to bring this up, the Dublin Arts Council has hired a consultant, Helen Lessick, to help put together a public art plan. She'd like to present that to the Public Services Committee, it's sort of a combination of an overview of public art, and some of her initial observations and findings regarding public art in Dublin. She's going to be here early December, and I wanted to know if you all were okay with that presentation? Can I give her the?
Sure.
Yeah, sure, why not?
Sure.
Awesome.
Something we're really behind, I think.
So, over the weekend, we had the Someone I Love Is Aging and So Am I, which was in combination with Centero, and I just want to thank Centero and Chris, I'm so sorry, Christine Nardakia, and all the panel members, it was, there were probably 125 people there, it was really impressive, and there was some vendors, and a special thanks to Stephanie and Lucy from Centero as well, you met them earlier tonight. It was a fant, fantastic event, and the city's made a lot of progress in that, I really look forward to going through the presentation with you guys at our next meeting.